All right, guys, we got about eight o'clock. Come on, Brett. Hang on, my thingy. All right, we got eight o'clock.
I pledge allegiance to the states of America and to the republic which stands on this.
Jenny David.
Here.
Roger Mahew.
Here.
Charles Wiltie.
Brenda Simmons.
Here.
Craig Scott.
Here.
Item two, approval of the agenda. Is there any changes, additions, or corrections to the agenda?
I have not. I'll make a vote to accept this presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
A second.
A support from Commissioner Simmons. Call in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item three, review of minutes, February ninth, twenty twenty-three, regular meeting minutes.
I've read the minute. I'll make a motion to accept them as.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
A second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any discussion on that? Call of favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item three B, February sixteenth, twenty twenty-three, committee of the whole meeting minutes.
I refer you to the minutes. I'll make a motion to accept them as presented.
We have a motion from Commissioner Scott.
A second.
Support from Commissioner Wiltie. Any discussion on that? Call in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Opposed. Motion carries item four, public comment and agenda items only. Is there any public comment in the room on agenda items only? Any public comment on the phone? Item five, correspondence from Livingston County related to auto insurance reform. Those have been received, that has been received and filed. Item six, consent agenda. Commissioners? You'd like to take these one by one, or is there any you would like to combine?
I don't have a problem with the ones all of Monica's son.
Oh, I.
Go ahead, Commissioner Simmons. Is there any like to pull to discuss? Which ones?
I like to discuss I.
Okay, I would like to pull J.
Uh.
Yep.
I'd also like to pull E. Any, any, any other ones you guys want to take? So low.
I'll make a motion to consent. To everything but E. I and J.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Mr. Scott with support from Commissioner Simmons. We have item six A. Resolution to approve survey or service agreement for remonumentation program. Item six B, resolution to approve county represent representative independent contractor agreement for remon- remonumentation program. Item six C, resolution to author- authorize pursuit of grant funds. Item sixty, resolution to approve use of homeland security grant funds. Item six F, resolution to authorize applications of more federal assistance. Item six G, resolution to approve animal control vehicle supplemental purchases. Item six H, resolution to support for Robin Grant application. Item six K. Resolution to authorize sale of surplus property. We have a motion with support. Um, any discussion on those? Roll call vote.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes. Item six E, resolution to accept quote for standalone electronic prescription services. This resolution is sponsored by Sheriff Brian Gilbert. The Michigan Public Health Code requires that a prescriber of prescription drugs shall electronically transmit a prescription, including a prescription for a controlled substance directly to a pharmacy for the patient's choice. The Ogumah County Correctional Facility is subject to electronic transmission rules in the Public Health Code. Approval of the resolution will accept a quote submitted by RXNT to pr- to provide standalone electronic prescription services at a total annual cost not to exceed seven hundred and twenty-five dollars. Have I seen you had sent us an email on that? Did you want to explain that at all?
The email started with a question at the meeting two weeks ago about the contract service we have for the jail medical service. So there's a specific vendor that provides the medical care for the inmates and, you know, sees over the day-to-day operation. The question was, is this prescription service included in that contract? And it was very clear as they went through the contract in about four or five different places that they specifically said this would not be the responsibility of that vendor. So they were saying very specifically addressing prescriptions. Any cost of dealing with those prescriptions was not included in that agreement. So that confirms that, you know, an additional proposal like the ones before you right now would be necessary because otherwise it would just be an added service to the other vendor who would also have to charge us for it. Don't think we're going to beat this price.
How is this an annual? Is this going to be an annual? Do you, do you know maybe time you can answer this question? Is this going to be a one-time? Uh, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars? Is there going to have to be updates on this? This, uh, program, I guess, is the word I'm looking for here? Do we know anything more about it, or is it just?
The description on the quote talks about an annual charge of six fifty. There is an electronic EPCS charge for the seventy-five, so I'm not sure, you know, what the difference is between the two, but at least me to think that at least six hundred and fifty would be an annual charge. So the bulk of what you're seeing, the total seven twenty-five, you know, six fifty of that looks like an annual.
So it's another six fifty on top of that?
Each year, each succeeding year. So it would have to, you know, be probably renewed or a new contract each year.
What we currently have can support this, correct, Tom?
I haven't seen anything out. I'm guessing it's more web-based, mobile-based browser. I, I don't think there's anything that's being installed on any of our equipment.
Well, it has to be put into the program.
It might just be just a website that you go through to get it.
Okay. Any further discussion on that?
I have not.
Is there somebody that's going to make a motion? Make a motion.
Well, you want to pull it out.
I did, and I wanted more information on it.
Favor of it?
I, I'm asking if there's anybody that's willing, yes.
I, I want to ask a question. So how many vendors are, would be involved in this, do you know?
One, that vendor that you, in the resolution, is the one that's involved.
Okay. Is that amount that I have six hundred and fifty bucks? Just do they bring it around you? Do you got to go pick them up? Do they mail them to you? What?
A big question for the.
What was your question, Commissioner Simmons?
How do you, how do you get the prescriptions? You go pick them up?
This is electronically. So this is this system and please.
No, no, no. That's what I'm talking about, the product itself.
Oh, okay. That's a question.
How do you get the product itself? Do you go pick it up? Do they mail it? How long does it take to mail it?
Depends on which pharmacy you're dealing with. In the case with fire, they will go and pick it up.
So the sheriff's going to go pick it up?
Correct. This is just to send a prescription to the vendor to have it filled and then the employee will go get it and bring it back.
Kind of like doctors' offices have right now. They send it in like that and the patient goes and picks it up.
Correct.
Okay. With the new laws, you weren't here at the meeting. There are some new guidelines, um, like certain prescriptions, controlled substances especially have to be, uh, uh, electronically. They're no longer taking paper copies.
Oh, okay.
So that's what this is doing.
Okay, thank you.
You're currently picking up drugs now.
Yeah, I assume they were. They wouldn't let the guy go.
Oh, they're currently taking them up.
Uh, it was a small pharmacy that we wanted to deliver at one time.
Oh.
Something. They were using them.
I'll make the motion that we pass the resolution.
Second. Motion from Commissioner Scott.
Second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yeah.
Item I, resolution to establish a special transit committee. This resolution is sponsored by the Board of Commissioners Standing Transit Committee. Ogumah Transit is a highly visible special fund department of Ogumah County with a roughly seventeen employees, twelve vehicles, and an annual budget of one point two-six million in fiscal year twenty twenty-three. A standing committee consisting of two county commissioners was recently established to provide enhanced oversight of Ogumah Transit operations. Upon reevaluation of oversight needs, the committee recommended transitioning into a five-person special committee as defined in section eight dot four of the Board of Commissioners Rules of Procedure. Approval of the resolution will establish the special committee consisting of Commissioners Charles Wiltie as chairperson, Commissioner Brenda Simmons as vice chairperson, and three Ogumah County citizens to be appointed by majority vote of the Board of Commissioners. It will be the responsibility of the Special Transit Advisory Committee to make recommendations to the Board of Commissioners and to report manners considered and rejected, as well as those considered and recommended. The Board of Commissioners reserves to itself all decision-making authority for manners concerning Ogumah Transit. The terms of the special committee will expire on December thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, which coincides with the term of all current county commissioners. Is there anybody that's? We have a.
I have, I have a discussion.
Is there anybody that's going to make, going to support this?
Oh.
Yeah.
Yes, Commissioner Mahew, do we have support?
Oh, second.
Support from Commissioner Simmons, discussion. Commissioner Simmons, did you have?
Are there applications being taken for this, or how, how is this process going to take place?
Not yet. You have to pass the resolution and then we'll open up, uh, for applications. On the webpage, there is a, a form that anybody can click that's an application for appointment to boards, commissions, and so on. Anybody can click on that, complete the form, hit submit. It will come to me, which will then in turn come to the board, but you'll see all the applicants and can make the decisions.
I, um, the person that called me about that, uh, I, I told him there's going to be an application process, but I didn't know what it was. So that's why I'm asking today and she saw himself there. She's been on a lot of committees before. She's headed a lot of stuff and so did you get that in?
Maybe. It's been a long week.
It has been a long two weeks for me.
Yeah, but I, I do, one came in like the day we first discussed this before that meeting, one came in as well. So
All right.
They just have them click on that. That's great. I think right on the front page. I remember, Tom.
I think it's under Commissioners, uh, if I remember right. It's under Boards, Standing, Application for Boards, Standing Committees, and there's a dropdown with all the different committees.
All right, because she, she uses transit a lot and even has some good questions for me to, to answer and I could not answer that question. That's the only reason I'm asking. That's.
So this is the, the first step to forming the committee.
Yeah, okay. Well, but the then the process comes next. Got you. Okay, that's good.
Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
Yep.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mahew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltie.
Yes.
Uh, six J, resolution to approve participation in collaborative juvenile facility feasibility study. This resolution is sponsored by the county administrator Timothy Delahoney. County governments in Michigan are responsible for providing community-based programming for child welfare and juvenile justice youth and placement costs for youth involved in juvenile justice cases. Unpredictable programming and placement costs are reimbursed by the state at fifty percent for eligible cost. Qualified placement facilities are increasingly difficult to locate, and the cost of the construction and operation of a juvenile placement facility is prohibitive for smaller northern Michigan counties. Approval of the resolution will authorize Ogumah County's participation in the collaborative juvenile facility feasibility study and accepts a proposal submitted by Brino Enterprises to conduct the feasibility study at a cost not to exceed five thousand dollars. Would anybody like to entertain this motion?
I will.
We have a motion, Commissioner Wiltie? Do we have a support?
Who, who was the one that separated?
Yeah, Commissioner Dan.
We have a support from Simmons.
You wanted to separate it out. Would you go ahead? I'd like to hear why.
Would you like to support this? We have a motion.
Why?
We have a motion on the floor. We have to have support before we go forward with discussion.
Well, that's not what happened on the first issue. The first issue started, you, you asked a question right off the bat. You brought it up, you brought up the first issue, whatever it was, and you started discussion on it right away. So point of.
We have a motion on the floor. Is there anybody that would like to support this?
Yeah.
You want to support it, Commissioner Mahew? So we, uh, is there any further discussion? Have you received any more information on this, Tim?
Um, we do have, uh, I think when I first reported on this, that, uh, three other counties were going to participate. There's a fourth. So Ross Common County has signed on uh, to the project, then they are added to Gladwin, Crawford, and Alpena. Uh, so we would be the fifth county to approve this, uh, getting to the feasibility study. So that's the group we'd be working with.
This is not a commitment to anything. This is just the five thousand dollars to move forward with the study.
Right, and not sure who the, uh, who handed out the, the information here at the table, but you know, this is very good information, and this is the kind of thing that we need to have a conversation with, with this group. Pardon?
Commissioner Mahew.
Okay, so you've got, for instance, uh, we look at the Grand Travers Leland project, which I've also been following. They've got an estimate to build of twenty-one to twenty-five million. I think if our, uh, project comes back with a number like that, you might see some of the counties dropping out because that's an awfully big price. But I'm not sure we're going to need anything to the scale that Grand Travers and Leland on each. We don't have that population base that we're working with. But we won't know unless we do the study. We won't know what these costs are. We won't be able to compare them to what we're paying now and determine whether or not over time this is be a savings to us or not. So this is, uh, this study will give us those answers, and then obviously a decision would have to be made several months, I'm sure, down the road as to whether we want to continue.
Would you like to explain the information you gave us?
No, really, I just have it. If you ask, people help you.
Okay, so where did you obtain this information?
Hmm.
Where did you obtain this information?
If you don't want to know.
No.
Okay.
I'm telling you, the numbers are not exact, but they're real close.
Okay.
Well, I'm kind of, I'm kind of dismayed here a little bit, uh. Then you've changed your stance on this since the last meeting.
No.
Will you just second the motion to go ahead and approve this?
He didn't accept it to approve.
What's the resolution? What did he second?
Support the resolution for further discussion at this point in time. We've not voted, not voted on it.
Wait a minute. Now, the, the motion is to go ahead and spend the money.
He supported the motion at this point in time. He has not voted on it.
Okay, so you're supporting a motion that you're not going to vote for.
Tim, can you explain?
This is great.
Tim, go ahead.
Motion to support the resolution is on the table.
Correct.
You haven't voted on the resolution yet, so nobody's made that commitment.
Commissioner Simmons, I think everybody needs to hear this. Go ahead.
Yeah, getting the motion or getting the resolution on the table for discussion. That's not an affirmative or, or negative vote. That happens when the roll call is made.
So the motion, uh, wait a minute, the motion we're working on is not just discussion, it's to pass this resolution.
Right.
That's the motion. And I got a support from a guy that doesn't want to support it.
I want to get it out to the vote on it.
That's not, that's not on account.
All right. And you wanted to argue about it.
That's the whole purpose. Hold on.
No, no, just discuss. I just wanted to.
Because I think there's been some, there's been some issues, uh, I shouldn't say issues, but there was a comment made a couple meetings back about wanting to discuss, uh, uh, resolutions that either have or have not been passed and wanting everybody's explanation for their vote. Um, it, that's not, that's not procedure. That's not the way things are ran. Um, this just, you're correct. Um, this is discussion. Now we make a roll call vote and we move forward. It either passes or it doesn't. Doesn't mean you can't bring it back to the table at a later meeting, but all this did was put this resolution on the table for discussion. Am I, am I correct on that, Tim?
Discussion and follow-up vote. If the, if the motion didn't receive a second, or there was no motion at all, there's not even any discussion and everything is, the motion, the resolution is nothing at that point. Consider yourselves like the umpire. You know, the pitch is made and batter turns to the umpire and says, is it a ball or a strike? The umpire says, it's nothing until I call it. Well, that's where you are right now. It's nothing until you call it. Now you have an opportunity to make the calls.
You'd never have to explain, and, and correct me if I'm wrong, you never need to explain why you chose to vote the way you vote, voted, correct?
There, there's no rule or law that says you have to explain. On the other hand, it's sometimes good for your colleagues to understand your vote, uh, but sometimes you're just against something and you vote no, so.
Isn't that the whole purpose of our committee of the whole meetings along with this open discussion right now? Prior to voting?
Sure, yeah.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons.
As, um, Mr. Mahew did provide us this information and it's great information. And I think, um, because all this work was done on this, I'm assuming he wanted to discuss, not ask, to, to do this. But, um, just to show people what the cost would be, so it kind of bring it to reality versus just wondering. And, and I would think if, um, you put it out for, um, what do you call that thing? You put it out for study on this thing, if it's closed, yeah.
That's, that's hopefully what this project will give us too. Only cost, but I see there's discussion in here about the annual operational costs. Um, those are the kinds of things that the study is going to bring back. So we, we will know, in our case, uh, pretty firm numbers.
Because we're looking at this, you know, it'd be a hundred and thirty thousand dollars anyway, for each county just for, to operate it. Plus the money to cost to build it and plus, you know, maintenance and all that sort of stuff.
And keep in mind that the state does reimburse counties about half of the cost. Uh, now there has to be eligible costs, and I'm certainly no expert on what those are, but what we spend right now to place juveniles through the childcare fund, the state does reimburse half that cost. So those are the kinds of things that we need to ferret out through a project like this. Which of those costs would be eligible? Which one are we on the hook for? And you'll have a very good idea as to whether or not this is something you want to proceed with.
And, you know, would that, would that be like, um, consistent, um, annual money that state gives us, or would it be?
It, it has been over the last, uh, in, you know, my nearly forty years of experience, this formula has changed very little. Uh, there was a different form of accounting about five years ago that was implemented, but basically it's the same. So about half of those costs end up being reimbursed to the counties. Sometimes it's a little more, sometimes it's a little less, but you can usually, uh, count it at about half.
Okay, um, some, some things that come to my mind is, uh, um, we're, we're, we're already paying for our facility right now. Um, and we have a few more years to pay for that yet. And this would be an additional, uh, amount of money that the county would have to pay. And, um, when all that gets built up out there, uh, west of town, you know, our funds, I think, go to the DDA now, don't they?
Certain funds are captured, yes.
Yeah, so they get part, they get our funding. I just, I think with what we spend out right now, if it's less than what this would be, be rootless to, to, to even have something like this. I just think we're, I think we're biting off something more than we can chew. Is what I think.
Commissioner Wiltie.
Um, so when this first came to us, I was, I was hesitant, you know, I mean, five thousand dollars, but as I kind of read more into things, and I do appreciate this information that, uh, Commissioner Mahew brought to the table here. I, I think there's a reason that there's four other counties around us here looking into this, um, and I think for the costs, I think it's important that we, we join this and, and we see what these costs will be. Commissioner Simmons, I know you were looking at some of these operational costs. Now, we have to remember this, this number we have in front of us is midman, and kind of like Tim was saying for Grand Travers County. You know, that's not an apples-for-apples situation. There could be a lot bigger facilities, a lot higher costs. I just, I just think it's really important that we join this and then get this information back, and then we can formulate a really smart decision from there.
Commissioner Scott.
Tim, uh, can any opioid money be used to pay for this study?
Uh, on the study, I would say no, because it's not going directly to, uh, anything to relieve any, any opioid, uh, concern. However, uh, when it comes to placement, um, I suspect just in my, with my general knowledge, uh, that's, that's a component that we want at the table when we start talking about the opioids, and I think they were actually listed, um, yeah, with courts, but somebody from that, um, that environment would be able to tell us a little more specifically of the juveniles we have to place, how many of them are, you know, subject to opioid situation, and then we could potentially use some of that money. About construction costs, I doubt it. Could doubt it.
Anything else, Commissioner Scott?
Well, I'd like to, I'd like to see this pass, but I had a discussion with this Commissioner Mahew, and he wasn't for it a month, a couple of weeks ago, and I hate to see it go down. Because I think we should investigate it. But it sounds like everybody's got a lot of questions here. I'd be, I'm apt to, uh, make a motion right now to table this until a committee meeting. Why? We're, we're discussing, we're in full board discussion here during this regular meeting.
Which is a time for discussion.
No, that's the committee's, the whole meeting is when we discuss all the items.
Before you make a vote, it's open for discussion.
I get that part.
So you would like to make a motion right now to table this?
Well, I'm apt to, yes. Yeah, I'll make the motion to table this until a committee's, the whole meeting.
I'll second that.
I think we need to ask Tim though, Tim, isn't time of the essence on this with, is there a deadline that need to be on board or not on board?
The group of counties is actually starting meetings, uh, later this month, and, you know, the more we hesitate, we don't get to participate until we've made a commitment. And I just would emphasize again, you're not committing to building a thing by passing this resolution. You're simply committing to the study to determine whether or not it's something we should proceed with. Uh, and frankly, you're not going to get the answers without a study like that. Now, we can join with other counties and do it, or we could try to do it all on our own, or, or just continue as we are with the costs that we have, never really knowing whether that the solution that would have worked for us. So, um, again, I just want to emphasize, this is not committing us to building a thing. It's committing us to do the research necessary to determine whether or not it's feasible.
But if we make a vote right now and we vote it down, then we're making a commitment not to.
Exactly.
I, I, I didn't get to respond whatsoever. Um, I, I think that this is great that, that counties are coming together and possibly forming a collaboration. I just think the timing for our specific county is, is bad. We just built that, uh, facility across the street. We have no idea uh, how much money that is going to save this county and what our needs are moving forward. So I don't know what, as far as the feasibility, if it's going to be an accurate study for our county, since that facility over there is so new. Um, let alone, again, I think this facility is great, but I don't see where our county with where we stand financially, uh, will be able to participate in this if this does move forward. Um, I just think the timing for our specific county is, is bad with that facility we just built. So Commissioner Simmons?
Yeah.
You, did you support Commissioner Scott's to table this? You did, correct?
I just wanted to.
Now, hang on, what do we do from here? Tim, do we do a roll call vote on tabling this?
I believe so. I'm going there now and give me just a second to find it.
Commissioner Simmons, did you want to add something? While he looks that up, go ahead.
If they're going to do is, if the study's going to be done, all these counties that want to participate, why don't we all pay for one study?
That's what we're doing. That's what we're doing. That's our five thousand dollars. They're going to do a study. I mean, all, all, all of the area, all of the counties that are participating.
Okay, so then we still going to cost us five thousand bucks?
Yes.
Not to exceed.
Okay. Not to exceed, okay.
So right now, there's a motion.
Would you be in favor of that?
Right now, you don't, right now, there's a motion on the table to table this. So now, do we take, because we had another motion.
Motion to table. Well, you'd have to have a, a motion, I'd rather a vote on whether or not you're going to table, and that will determine what happens next.
So we need to vote right now on whether or not we're going to table this, correct?
Right.
Roll call vote.
Brenda Simmons.
No, let's not table, is that the study?
You, you're, are you, are you in favor of tabling this? Yes or no?
Until the committee as a whole, maybe?
Until it's brought off the table.
I think you just answered that.
It's a yes or a no? It's a yes or no.
To take it off the table?
To table it?
Yes.
You want to table it, that means we're not voting on it. Today?
Yes.
Okay.
Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
No.
Roger Mayhew.
No.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Hey, it's tabled.
Now, if I could follow up. Best question was asked. Um. So question that's been placed on the table remains there and can be taken from the table during the same meeting. Or the next session after it was laid on the table, if it's not taken from the table within these time limits, the question dies, although it can be renewed at a later date. So what that's saying is, as a motion to table. Could now be a motion to take from the table either at this meeting or the next meeting. If we don't have that happen, then this motion, this action dies. A new uh subject can be raised at a later date, but that's that's the time limits within the rule.
It's currently tabled.
Currently tabled.
Okay, item seven, claims. They have claims of two hundred seventy-six thousand one hundred and fifty dollars and fifty-two cents. Who reviewed claims?
I reviewed the claims.
Mister Scott, you have the floor.
I will make a motion to. Uh approve this. Claim.
We have a motion. Is there support?
Anybody else look at?
We have a motion right now. Is there support to pay the bills? All support to pay the bills. Commissioner Scott, you reviewed the bills, do you like to explain them?
Uh I mean, I didn't see anything that was so. So outside uh regular bills, there were any, there were some state fees and things like that. Nothing spectacular.
Commissioner Simmons, did you review bills?
No, I did not, I should have called someone to. Take my place and I did not do that.
So now what?
Well, you got him in front of you, somebody can make good second. He got there.
Is there, is there a policy that a a second commissioner has to review them?
We simply put together the claims committee and that committee is responsible, uh so there's no policy about. You have to have two people looking at them, I can say I look at them uh as well and I would. Uh concur with Commissioner Scott, I didn't say anything out of the ordinary uh within there, but. If as was said, they're all in front of you now, so we can talk about any of them that might be a concern.
We have a motion of support, any further discussion? Roll call.
Uh Craig Scott.
Yes.
Jenny David.
Yes.
Roger Mayhew.
Yes.
Charles Wiltzy.
Yes.
Brenda Simmons.
Yes.
Item eight, unfinished business, do we have any? Item nine, a Oklahoma Heights FFA agricultural issues team presentation.
So I don't know if they're here yet, they are, they are. This is um. This is sort of the committee, a whole portion of our meeting today, um Oklahoma Heights was here a year ago, I think it was. Uh with a presentation, just a little bit of background, they need to make five public presentations. In order to qualify or go to their state competition next week, we are the fifth presentation. The group has already participated in a regional competition and has won that. Kind of looking forward to what we've got to hear from. Uh there's a big competition is on the night next week. And hopefully if they do well there, they could potentially qualify for a national competition, uh depending on how that goes. It's very interesting to get into the details of what this program is.
They've done this, they've done this every year, right, I think since I've been, I've been on.
Yes. Yeah, it's been every year.
Been very nice, so we can go sit in that, they're gonna set up.
Yeah.
I'm gonna go sit out here so we can watch. Is that okay? You guys gonna sit up up here?
Can I see?
Spain.
You believe it.
Good afternoon, honorable judges, timekeeper, fellow FFA members and guests. My name is Addison Curtis, I'm a member of Oklahoma Heights FFA Agricultural Issues Team. My fellow teammates are Reese Rouse, Caitlin Wong, Courtney Jones, Rhea Emrah, and Mallory Miller. Our agricultural issue this year, did there be more control over use of antibiotics in livestock production? On the pro side of the argument will be Caitlin Wong as nurse in the medical field. And Mallory Miller as a concerned citizen about the overuse of antibiotics. On the conside will be Reese Rouse as a local veterinarian and Courtney Jones as a local farmer. Rhea Emrah will be the restaurant owner and I myself will be the restaurant waitress. As many of you have probably already heard, Michigan, along with the entire country, is experiencing a growing debate over the use of antibiotics in livestock production. For more than seventy years, farmers have used antibiotics approved by the FDA to treat, control, and prevent diseases in their livestock. Antibiotics are important to both the animal's welfare and human food safety. Thus, the livestock and poultry producers rely on antibiotics to provide the United States consumers with the safest food possible. Those of us in the livestock animal production believe that the cautious use of antibiotics is key to keeping both animals and humans safe. So now you might ask, what is raising the alarm bells for so many in the farming communities? This is where the BFC, our veterinary feed directive comes into play. As of June eleventh, twenty twenty-three, all medically important antibiotics and dosage forms such as injectables, intramammary, embolus. Approved for the use of animals, both food producer and veterinarians, will not only be available over the counter. Not only be available to livestock producers from a veterinarian or purchaseable with a prescription of tape from a vet. Before we start our skit, we would like to give you some insight on our issue. The US Food and Drug Administration announced on June second, two thousand and fifteen, the Veterinary Feed Directive Final Rule. The final rule is an important piece to the agency's overall strategy to promote the conditioned use of antibiotics in food producing animals. This would bring the use of these drugs under veterinary supervision, so they use only when necessary for assuring animals' health. The Veterinary Feed Directive Final Rule outlines the process for authorizing use of BFD drugs defined in the FDA Guided Document Number two hundred and thirteen. What this means is that animal drugs intended for the use in or on animal feed cannot be used to help promote growth. And can only be used in otherwise healthy animals as a way to help prevent the feed and only under care of a licensed veterinarian. This new rule went on effect on January first, two thousand and seventeen. In the US, they're legally mandated withdrawal times for antibiotics used in food producing animal. If antibiotics are used to cure sick animals, the animal itself in the case of meat or milk production. Is not allowed into the food supply until the antibiotic has cleared the animal's system. Antibiotics get processed out of an animal's body just as humans bodies process and eliminate medicine we take. The required periods for withdrawing medication are specific for each drug and species and are currently approved by the FDA based on research residue and edible tissues. Antibiotics are miracle drugs for sure. They were introduced in the nineteen forties and have dramatically dramatically reduced the numbers and severity of illness and death. From bacterial infections such as pneumonia. There are currently over a hundred types of antibiotics. You're probably most familiar with penicillin, such as amoxicillin, or recromycin, petricycline, and azithromycin, or best known as DPAC. Each is designed to target certain types of infections by either killing the bacteria itself or keeping it from reproducing. What antibiotics can do is fight viral infections like the common cold, flu, or upper respiratory infections or allergy. Antibiotics were introduced to be in livestock production animals in the nineteen fifty. There's an increasing concern about antibiotic resistance. Drug resistance, drug resistance strikes two million Americans a year, comes twenty-three thousand deaths. According to the Center for Disease Prevention. The FDA describes antimicrobial resistance, the complex phenomenon. With many causes of the obvious antibiotics, whether in humans or animals, consider resistant. Antibiotic resistance occurs on an antibiotic has also the ability to affect the control or affect trade. You'd have to be truly naive to believe that production agriculture isn't steadily moving between, so. How will we relate to produce our stock feed or culture A or B? This might not be so troubling if those directed report from individuals with personal knowledge. When these individuals try to call shots and no real world experience, it becomes very troubling. Unfortunately, when these shock collars have their own not so named agendas, it becomes a warzone. This is the age of the United Society of the United States with people for the ethical treatment of animals. And it sure is affecting consumer demands. It becomes Maxi Band. It sure seems that those most financially backing and most TV soundbites are rolling back.
Morning, would you like a table or the bar today?
A table, please.
You got it, you're regular.
Yes, please, you got it, a cup of black coffee and a slice of apple pie coming up.
Welcome, lady, Big D, would you like a table or would you prefer the bar today?
The bar, please.
All right, if you can have a seat here and if you're just gonna have seated bar, here's some menus. Can I get you something to drink while you decide what you like?
Just coffee, please.
Okay, two coffees, coming up. I'll be right with you.
Please your coffee and pie, enjoy.
Thanks, thanks for meeting me for lunch, Reese. It seems like with our busy schedule, it's been forever since we've been able to get together.
I know, work's been just crazy. Good morning, have you decided what you'd like?
Can you tell me, do you serve only regular milk here or do you offer organic?
We offer both.
What about your produce? Is it locally grown or is it commercially grown?
I'll have the Big D's burger and fries, please.
We do offer some organic grown produce, but it does cost more.
Unfortunately, all these new food bans are keeping us and the restaurant business on our toes and they all come at a price.
It may cost more, but it's worth it. Morning, have you decided?
A cup of coffee and slice of apple pie coming up.
Just one more question, do you know if your chicken comes from free range chickens or is it from those cage antibiotic fed farm chickens?
Our chickens must be what you call free range, because when I came to work this morning, I'm pretty sure I saw Carl the cook chase them around the backyard. I don't think you can get any more free range than that.
Really, Caitlin? What? We all need to make healthy choices as well as make a positive impact on the environment and animal well-being.
I get it, it's the labels, they're everywhere. Antibiotic-free, cage-free, no hormones added, non-GMOs, and RBSC-free. As a large animal production vet, I can guarantee you that all meat, milk, and poultry products sold in the US are antibiotic-free.
As a farmer, if one of my animals does get sick and needs antibiotics. We must follow strict FDA guidelines for proper dosage, duration, and withdrawal time. Add it as an added layer of protection, the USD's DA samples of milk and meat, make sure it's free of any antibiotic residue.
Listen, in my field of work, every day I see people come in the hospital with infections. That have become antibiotic resistant to some of the drugs that we have at our disposal. Eventually, we're gonna run out of options for them, then what? There are already superbugs out there that traditional antibiotics can't touch.
That is scary, but to place all the blame on use of antibiotics and livestock is the main cause of antibiotic resistance, isn't right either.
So as some of the medical field, you would believe infections are becoming immune to antibiotics.
Antibiotics are important for curing bacterial infections, but they can also weaken one's immune system if used improperly or too often. A doctor should prescribe them only when necessary and sparingly, which will help protect against future problems with antibiotic resistance.
Well, I just read an article that said eighty percent of all antibiotics used in the US are in farm animals.
That's the percentage that is often repeated by the media and animal activists, the number is out of date and based on confusing data. The report only collects data on usage, sales, not actual usage. Farmers and vets may purchase them but may never administer them. Fact is, pound for pound, humans and pets use ten times more antibiotics than animal agriculture does. Plus, antibiotics are given to both humans and animals by weight. So think about it, a sixteen-hundred-pound cow with pneumonia is gonna be treated with a much larger dosage of antibiotic. Than an eight-pound newborn with the same bacterial infection.
Go to the source, if you have a question, come ask me, I have nothing to hide. My family consumes the very same products I offer to the public. Just as we wash our hands during cold flu season to prevent us from getting sick. Farmers take strict, strict precautions such as vaccines and biosecurity. Then, so to prevent their animals from getting sick so that they don't need antibiotics in the first place.
Take a guess at what country uses the most antibiotics produced for livestock production animals? China, followed by Brazil.
What most don't understand is that antibiotic resistance occurs naturally. But misuse of antibiotics in humans and animals is accelerating the process. A number of infections such as pneumonia, tuberculosis, diarrhea, and salmoniasis are becoming harder to treat. As the antibiotics used to treat them are becoming less effective. Are there that many antibiotics over that don't require a vet's prescription?
There's a few, some of the prescriptions, some of the label changes will be seen to prescription only are. LA two hundred, penicillin, pylon two hundred, intramammary tubes such as today and tomorrow. Paramycin, scour tablets, and sulfate-based antibiotics.
What most don't realize is that these products are used for a lot of preventative issues in the agricultural sector, it's like our first defense. Exactly, those are many producers go to antibiotics. My fear is much like when the BFC was set in place in seventeen seventeen. Many producers simply pulled these products from the shelf and stopped offering them altogether.
That's a real possibility, if they don't have in place the ability to meet the legal burden of acting as a pharmacy. Which requires the ability to review veterinary authorized prescription products. As well as the fact as these items have a shelf life. Small companies can't sit on inventory that may not be purchased now because a customer doesn't have a prescription from a local vet to buy the products.
Y'all just don't get it, when I'm sick or when you're sick, we just don't run to the local Walgreens rated. And grab us a bottle of penicillin to treat infection or a bottle of scour tablets for the diarrhea. There's a reason that you need a prescription for these products, you need to see a doctor and they then will decide what is the best treatment for you. You're wrong, we do get it, I'm one of the lucky ones, you see. I already have a VCPR set in place with my local veterinarians, many people around here are not so lucky. What's a VCPR?
It's a nightmare, that's what it is.
It stands for veterinary client patient relationship. Thanks to this new ruling, all producers have to have this set in place through a licensed veterinarian to get antibiotics for the livestock. So what's wrong with that? It's no different than having to go to your primary doctor to get your prescriptions from, why are you also against getting a vet?
No one said they were against getting a vet.
You think your waiting rooms and yours are busy, try getting into a vet's office.
Exactly.
We are considered a small-scale producer, my kids have a few four-inch project animals and I'm here to tell you there are no vets in our area that are even taking a client. Wow, really? For decades now, farmers have been complaining about a shortage of veterinarians that specialize in large animal medicine in rural areas.
It is currently at an all-time high with five hundred counties across forty-six states. Forty-six states reporting theme that shortages a year alone according to the USDA. And yes, Michigan is one of the leading states theme that shortens. We're already losing animals because we just don't have enough vets to go around, according to the American Veterinary Medical Association.
With these new regulations, you're tying the hands of the very people that are trying to care for them and now they'll have no recourse. There are very strict guidelines and testing points to ensure that there is no antibiotic residue and any records. Pro, approximately eighty percent of all antibiotics sold in the United States are used for livestock production animals. Con, pound for pound, humans and pets use ten times more antibiotics than animal agriculture. Pro, the science has created robust public antibiotics use of the many believe the livestock industry is well played. Con, new regulations will definitely put a strain on the already critical shortage of local rural veterinarians. For decades, farmers have endured a shortage of local large animal vets. Pro, consumers aren't reassured that the food that they are consuming is antibiotic-free with no antibiotic residues. Con, it could create another expense for those of us in production agriculture, many small producers cannot afford to have a vet on their panel. Pro, widespread antibiotic use has engulfed a multi-jourณism in the past. Each year in the US, one to two million Americans consume effective bacteria and twenty-three thousand of them alive. Con, antibiotics help prevent livestock from diseases as well as help treat them. Lifting more regulations on antibiotics will only make it harder for farmers to treat their livestock in a timely manner. Pro, the US is not alone, great brands throughout Canada, Sweden, and Denmark have all played in antibiotic use in livestock production to some degree.
So should there be more control over the usage of antibiotics in livestock production? So should there be more control over the usage of antibiotics in livestock production? What's really at stake? To many, it seems that the antibiotic removal is in full swing. No one disagrees that there are definitely superbugs out there and they have become antibiotic resistant. But the big question seems to be, where does the blame fall? Farmers would argue that their products go through rigid tests for antibiotic residue before they get offered into the public food supply. While others are weary of just how accurate these tests really are. For some, it's about animal welfare or the environment. So take a hard look at where their ulterior motives really are. It's become what consumers perceive is the best way for you to raise your livestock. So are we setting ourselves up for disaster? We must consider the fact. There's definitely a shortage of qualified large animal veterinarians in rural areas. As well as the shortage of supplies causing costs to increase dramatically. Both farmers and the AGMA are ringing the alarm now. They worry without enough vets on the front line and the tying hands of livestock producers. We are setting our food supply chain vulnerable to diseases. It's a slippery slope and it may depend on where your pride and fly as to which side you're gonna pay. However, it is most important to remember that there's no one size fits all solution like so many would like you to believe. So, I leave you with this. Remember, farmers are our first defense to food security.
Thank you for some of your presentation. I will judge your questions if you have.
Very interesting. You. You, uh. Highlight the, uh, the need for government to intercede and. And, and it has so much control. You said a lot of key words in the agendas. Uh, uh, you know, uh. Trying to get, get government to, to, uh, uh, understand your side of it. Real-life situations versus people that don't know anything about it. Think you, you should look at, uh, your local government in your future and take part of it.
And if you know the answer to this, but why is it such a shortage of large animal vets?
I have a judgment answer to your question. Well, there's such a shortage of local large animal veterinarian because this, it's a really hard. Got to do and the average age for your vets these days are between sixty-ish years old and. It's just really hard on your body and there's not much people that wanna take on large animals, especially with. The, you can make time to hunt for the smaller animal as you can with your large animals.
How many years of schooling is required to do that?
I'm hold that, may I ask a question? Um, I, from my knowledge, it's about eight, ten years.
And compared to how many years you think from a doctor?
I'm hold, Josh, in this position, it's pretty much the same.
One last question. How many universities offer doctors?
What was that?
How many, how many universities are, um, offer doctorates in veterinary services? I'm pretty sure.
Not sure. Uh, the only one that I know of that is like around here that I for sure know is MSU for their veterinary program. Um, and also as far as we know, like MSU right now, they're holding three or four, only three or four chairs. Or especially if you wanna go into large animal veterinarian because they can't find anybody that wants to. So, uh, you got, we talked to Taylor Prince and she said that they're holding three or four. Bots for large animal vets, so nobody wants to do it. In her class right now. She said there's like a hundred and fifty kids and only single digits of kids are going in a large animal vet, so. How many large animal vets are in your county? Oklahoma County. So there's, in Oklahoma, there's pretty much Jake, Ryan, Dorfert for a large animal vet. If you meet. Other ones are straight to the grow. She comes up here occasionally if she really, if she really needs to, but. Yeah, yeah. And Jake's pretty much the only. And Dr. Thomas and Winnebago, that's pretty much it.
Are there, um, are there farms in Michigan? That are, I guess my question will be, how many farms in Michigan, if any, are antibiotic-free?
I'm hold, Josh, may I?
It's so.
Question, please. Um, as to my knowledge, no. I don't believe from my perspective, because I work on Cedar Range Farm, um. If the animals do need antibiotics, they are set off and treated separately. Their milk does not. Contaminate or touch any of the milk that is sold or go onto the truck as well. All that milk is tested for antibiotics every time the port is put onto the truck and even when it gets to the facility. So even if these farmers are treating with antibiotics to cure their animals, none of the antibiotics are going into our food supply.
But are there currently any farms in the state of Michigan that you guys are aware of? That are totally antibiotic, whether it's dairy, whether it's beef. Um, that are, so, are advertised as totally antibiotic-free?
And if they are, then I would probably say that's probably not a hundred percent true.
That would be antibiotic and I guess, uh, so, uh. Um, I'm thinking of, oh my gosh, we just did all the get, um, vaccine, yeah, I'm sorry, hello.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Uh, I don't have a question. I just wanted to tell you ladies, uh, I'm a four here at the Bay. Under universal C when I'm in the thumb. And I was in parliament to proceed your university runners-up for a few years. What you guys are doing is not an easy thing to come out, stand and talk in front of people. And you guys should be very proud of what you're doing. It's gonna set yourselves up for careers, young leaders. And I commend you guys. You're doing a great job.
And some of you, it's your last year, correct? Two seniors. Any of you? No?
No.
Okay.
No, we're juniors and sophomores. We're all juniors, who are sophomores.
Nice job, guys.
We don't have anywhere now. We actually do have real, like, top and I will.
All right, guys. Are you ready to continue? Ready?
I'm always ready.
I'm ninety, Ladonna Schultz, prosecutor, he's already related to software purchase. Come on up.
Good morning.
Good morning.
So the reason that I'm here is our operating system is about to leak. Um, for the new commissioners. Currently, um, the operating system that we use is through the prosecuting attorney's support station in Michigan, which is PIPAM. It's called ACT, which is adult case tracking. Um, it has a lot of glitches and basically PIPAM decided that it's too expensive to keep operating it because of all the fixes. So they're gonna let it fail. Um, we don't know when it's gonna fail. Um, at the last meeting that Andrew and I just attended, it was a little bit ago, they told us it could be tomorrow. It could be two weeks, it could be a month from now, it could be a year's. We don't know. But they told us they're done putting in any money into ACT. So. We have to find another option system. We knew it was coming. I've been talking to Tim and Tom about it for about, was about a year and a half now, Tim.
That's all right.
Yeah. So what we've done is there's only so many corporations, um, that get, have this kind of software. For prosecutors offices. So we took like the top four or five and we had meetings with all of them and had them give us pitches and proposals for, um. How much it would cost us to use their data operating systems. Um, I'm not a techie person, so I had my staff, um, attend those seminars with me and. Um. Tom from IT because, you know, he knows what questions to ask. And after reviewing all their proposals, we decided that probably the best was Carpe. Uh. Did you wanna say anything to that, Tom?
Well, Ladonna said pretty well nailed it. Um, PIPAM is gonna stop their support. Currently the tech that we work with right now is actually retired from there, but they contracted him on after his retirement. So later, he's gonna leave and, uh, like she said, they're not gonna support it. So we looked into cloud-based solutions. Right now, what we have is hosted locally on a server that is, the end of support is October of this year. And, um, we're gonna have to find something to replace it and there's no sense in my eyes of replacing it with something that's hosted here. When there's so many cloud-based solutions out there. Um. We, we were looking into this over a year ago, but we were waiting to see if the opioid money would be able to be used for this and it's. We got the bad news that it can't be. So, once we found that out, and obviously that's why we're bringing it to you. We didn't wait to the eleventh hour of it crashing and not being able to be supported. We were hoping that we were, we were waiting on that opioid settlement. Um. We paid about forty-two hundred dollars a year for, for PIPAM. Obviously, this is gonna be double the cost yearly. But there are a lot more features to it as well. Right now, with your evidence and whatnot, when an officer brings evidence in. Prosecutor's office copies it onto a desk, keeps it with that file. This would have the ability for agencies to upload evidence. It wouldn't have to be copied here, several copies. Um. And I think you had some support from the agencies financially, didn't you?
Yeah, some of the agencies, because there's a cost for them to tie into our system.
Correct.
And some of the agencies indicated to me that they'd be willing to pay that cost. The only one that we don't have, um. Any, any, for sure. A commitment from is Michigan State Police, but it's hard for the local lieutenant to give that authorization when he's got such a chain to go up. And so, but we're working on that.
And really that interface and the financial support is a very small stone being thrown into that seventy thousand dollar bond, but. Um. What we would do is sign with Carpe and half of the, the eighteen thousand five hundred. License fee would be due within thirty days. The rest would be due upon completion, which is about a year out. So. About forty-seven thousand would actually be in next fiscal year's budget.
Yeah, and, um. At this last meeting, we kinda did like a show of hands for the different counties on who's going with what. Ross Common already has Carpe up and running and Ross Common is the same district that we have, so it kinda makes sense. They use the same operating system. Um. It looks like there are seventeen counties in Michigan that are currently with Carpe. And there's one, only one other that's not with Carpe. But the one company that's not with Carpe, um, stood up and said that. Um, they went cheaper and they now regret it because that company said, well, if you want that letter downloaded. So you can send out to your victims, that's an extra cost, that's an add-on. This is an add-on, this is an add-on. And then their total add-ons were already at one point four million dollars. Where Carpe doesn't do that to you. It's a flat fee and then that's it. So. It looks like from a show of hands that, um, the rest of the counties are gonna follow suit and everyone's pretty much gonna go with, um, Carpe. There may be some out there that decide they want a different system. Um, now. PIPAM is going to, because they have to manage their data too, so they have to come up with a system. They were supposed to vote at that meeting I was at a week back, um, but because of poor attendance at the business meeting, they're gonna do it by electronic vote. Which is not supposed to occur until March eighth. My understanding is after the electronic vote. PIPAM is also going to go with Carpe. Once. Um, they go with Carpe, that yearly operating charge that Tom was talking about, instead of paying to Carpe. We will start paying back to PIPAM like we currently do. And PIPAM seems to think that because they can get all the counties on board, that the operating cost will actually be, be able to be reduced. So for the first four, because they think it's gonna take them at least four years to get Carpe up and running with them. So for the first four years, we're gonna have to pay to Carpe, which may be that a little bit extra like Tom was saying. But once PIPAM's up and running with Carpe. If they can negotiate with all the counties, they're hoping to get that cost down, so it would be similar to what they're paying for ACT right now.
Am I, am I looking at that total one-time cost as fifty-one thousand dollars and then the annual cost is nine thousand fifty dollars? That's correct?
Yeah.
And can your budget su- support, is this coming out of your budget?
No.
It's not?
No, that's why I'm here. We're. My budget, I mean. Five percent of my budget is wages. You know, I don't have any extradition. While I do have a little.
I was hopeful. Tim, where would this come? Tim, where would this come from?
I see it coming in two pieces. The piece that we need right now, uh, Tom mentioned is eighteen thousand.
Half of that would be due within thirty days.
Okay, uh, that we just commit that out of contingency, so, um, right now contingency is about seventy-one thousand and so we cover that. And with the product itself not being installed until the next fiscal year, we actually budget for it when we do the budget for twenty-four. So it actually will be there in, in the prosecuting attorney's budget and it's addressed. Uh, so I think that'd be the easiest, well, the second easiest path. The first easiest, if you wanted to commit ARPA money to it, you could do that. I don't necessarily suggest doing that. We'll, we can have a conversation about that when we talk about ARPA. But I think we can handle it within the normal budgeting process and leave the ARPA money to other projects.
You see this, I mean, obviously this is something we need to do. Is this gonna somehow save us money? Someway?
That's a good question. So Carpe says yes, uh, because we're gonna be going paperless.
Okay.
So eventually. Cause I'm old, that's our, each and all dog new tricks. I like to have a file. Um, but they're saying that, um. Even like right now with our discovery, you know, we have to buy like the, the disk, put everything on disk, give it to the defense attorney. We're gonna be able to electronically send them discovery. So there will be some cost savings.
In time.
In time. Um, they're also saying that, um. You know, like man-hours for data entry is gonna be gone because now. When you receive stuff electronically from law enforcement, it'll automatically be downloaded somehow. I don't know, because I, I mean, I'm, I'm not, I don't do any of that at the office, so I'm not exactly sure how that works. And I'm sure there's still gonna have to be some type of accepting and downloading it somehow, you know, like through the office. Um, but that's what they're telling me now. So. Carpe says yes. We'll see. It's, we'll see.
Question.
Can we subscribe?
What's the current, what's our current cost for the program we have now?
Forty-two seventy-one.
A year?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it's gonna go up to nine and then in four years, once PIPAM gets with Carpe, they're hoping to get that cost back down.
Yeah, so the difference between what we're already paying and what we're going to pay is.
What'd you say?
Not that much.
It's the implementation that's getting us.
Right, the one-time implementation, sure.
It's double cost.
Yeah. Okay, well, it looks like, uh, they've done, done due diligence in comparing plans and everything else. And, and taken all the steps. We are still in a business meeting?
Correct.
Um, I'll make a, I'll make a motion to go ahead with the implement, the purchase of Carpe.
Do you have a support?
I'll second.
So we have a motion commissioner scout support from Commissioner Simmons. Is there any, did any other commissioners have questions or comments?
This program, it sounds like it's gonna be much more efficient than what they have already. And it saves man-hours and it saves buying so much product that we're buying now to, to run an office.
I, I think it's a win situation here.
Commissioner, may I have any questions? Commissioner, will see. And we can, we can support this in our current budget.
You can, um, yeah, I'm, I'm glad you turned to me because now I'll get to. I would be a lot more comfortable if this was referred to your meeting next week, which is also a regular meeting. Which would give me an opportunity to put together a resolution to detail exactly how we're gonna go about this. It's. It's much more, uh, so I have much more confidence if I can see this in a resolution. I know where I'm pulling the funds from. Also the reminder that uh, when we do the twenty four budget, we're gonna need to include another. I'm sure you'll remind me if it's missing, but it's just having that documentation is um, frankly, um. You know, from a management standpoint, my preferred way of moving forward, not that passing the motion would be wrong. But I would rather detail that for you in the form of that resolution. You can see what we're doing and see, uh, you know, measure our progress from there.
Is there any urgency to this? I mean, is there a reason that this needs to be passed today?
There. A week's not gonna probably kill us. Who knows when this system's gonna go down and then we're gonna be scrambling. The, I called um, Tim in a panic from the conference. Because basically, um, after talking to Carpel, um, they're saying that they're scheduling. Um, downloads one year out. So I know Iasco County, they're gonna be up and running with Carpel this July. Um, but if we were to sign a contract tomorrow, it's gonna be another year before they're even gonna come in and get this, get this in for us. So the sooner the better.
I agree. I think that this is a lot of money. I would prefer, and, and I think we definitely uh. Are all in favor of this by people's discussion, but I, I think we need to see it in writing. Yes, Commissioner Simmons.
Um, you said that the current program you're working could crash anytime now. So this is another year. What are you gonna do between now?
Fingers crossed. There's nothing else we can do. If it does crash, I don't know what we'll do, to be honest with you. Might be writing the warrants out by hand with an ink pen.
Commissioner Scott.
I'll, I'll rescind the motions. Based on. The administrators.
If I can just make a suggestion on that resolution, can you put in there who. Um, has the authority to contract with Carpel? Is it something that I'm gonna be signing on behalf of the office or if you're gonna be doing it?
That will be the board chair signs the contract. But that's part of the wording in the resolution.
Cause he did ask me that. He said, you know, who's, who am I, who's gonna be my contact person? I said, well, I'll find out.
I just signed the resolution. I'm not your contact person.
I just wanna confirm what Tim, Tim you said, and I, I agree, I just wanna make sure that. We're going to put that in for their budget for next year instead of looking into using ARPA bonds, correct?
Well, that's, that's my suggested approach and also there's the eighteen thousand plus or minus that we would pull from our contingency line out of this year's budget. That gets the commitment, gets us in line, uh, so that within the year we have that and um, again, um. If they're a year out, there's no reason then to rush, you know, committing that. We can do it through the normal process.
Well, the only problem, the, the sooner the better, only because all the counties are working right now, rushing. And, you know, we, we're getting in line. I don't wanna, and you know, there's some counties out there like Oakland and Wayne County, who knows how long they're gonna be down there, so. We can get it for them, the better.
But it may be the whole, you're gonna have all of this information in front of us, correct? And then we'll make the decision.
It's a regular meeting next week, but I will have all that. Compiled with that resolution, you've got the, uh, pretty lengthy document that talks about the software and what it does, some pretty detailed. Write down on what the costs are with it already. So what I wanna do is map out through that resolution, how we're gonna go about doing this.
So we'll be able to vote on it next Thursday.
So now we have a motion to rescind. Do we need a support on that?
Really good person who made the second, also supported the rescinding and.
Okay, do we need a roll, do we need a roll on that?
Now, there's nothing on the table.
Okay, perfect. Okay, thank you, thank you, very much. Uh, what are we, where are we at next? Item nine C, Tom Spence, Information Technology Director, email system. Tom, you have the floor.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Reached out, got quotes for email. Uh, it's kind of ironic. At the last meeting, I said I was going to wait until the following, yeah, I had a meeting the following day with somebody else to provide another quote. And a month later, I still haven't gotten yet. So I got one vote for this. One of the biggest takeaways that I want you guys to kind of understand is that we're switching from something that is a per computer based cost. To a per user base cost. So. Let's say, for example, your chair is your computer, you know, it doesn't really matter who sits where, but when you put the nameplates in front of the chair, that's, that's your, it's your spot. If you, if Brad gets up and moves to Jenny's spot, that user license goes with Rec. From one spot to another. So we have more users than we have computers. Because of like the jail where we have double shifts, but the same amount of computers. So our cost is gonna increase, but we're getting more out of it. Um, at the bottom of this sheet right here, I laid out. When we buy a computer, we buy Office, which is Word and Excel and your word processing. Your spreadsheet software, we buy and it goes on that computer. Doesn't matter who sits at that computer, that license is on that computer. Well. With the new system, the way that they're cloud basing stuff, that's where we're switched to a per user. So. Our patrol car laptops and things like that is gonna be per user based, not per computer based. That's where the cost increase comes. It's not just an email solution. This is also a Microsoft Office solution. So on the top, I laid out year one. With the cost by users. What I did here was take our hundred and twenty two users. And I, we needed a twenty five user commitment to get the price. For a three year lock in. If we didn't do twenty five users, our price could flux. So I started out with twenty five users on Office three sixty five. Everybody's email is moving, hundred and twenty two users, their email was moving. Doesn't matter, everybody's moving the email system. But it's the Office three sixty five that comes with the word in Excel, that's gonna come along with it with the twenty five users. So, I wanted to get that price lock in and I thought I was gonna do this in increments. And then Karen came along. And said that she has some funds that she can contribute to this. So I'm still not exactly sure where I'm gonna start. On this year one total and year two total, if I start out with seventy five people out of the gate. On Office three sixty five and a hundred and twenty two emails. That's gonna be dependent upon the department need. I see you rubbing your eyes.
Well, I'm just thinking, if you go by cost by users, that, that cost is gonna change as people leave, as people, as you hire people, and there's a big difference. That's absurd.
And. If you flip the page where I laid out the number of users and whatnot, I actually cleaned house during this call. Acquisition process in a month, I deleted some of our old email accounts with users. It's billed annually though, so if we have a user that is here for three months, we pay for that three months.
So the five year, just so everybody knows what we're looking at, the five year cost by user is a hundred and thirty nine thousand eight hundred and fifty nine dollars and eighteen cents. The cost by computer for five years is sixty four thousand two hundred and fifty two dollars and ninety eight cents, correct?
And that is going to depend on how we start out year one and two. You see, I only started with twenty five users. Our first year. On Office three sixty five, but all hundred and twenty two email accounts are moving. So if I start out with a hundred and twenty two Office three sixty five users out of the gate, that cost is gonna increase.
Why? Why did you, why did you choose to do one year twenty five and the next year seventy five?
Because I didn't know Karen was gonna have funds. I was doing this for budgetary purposes only. And I have to manually, I have to do this. So do I wanna really start out with a hundred and twenty two right out of the gate?
Well, if you don't, what are the others gonna do? I mean, everybody needs access to their email.
They'll still have web based mail. It'll be an outlook web based mail, like Registered Deeds doesn't have Office now. They have a web based mail, so they'll stick with a web based mail. It'll just move to another platform.
So is this coming out of your budget? Where's this coming from?
Out of salaries and wages.
I think again strategically, looking at the year one total, the fifteen thousand. Uh, we're not gonna be able to continue going to this well. You know, forever, but we still have funding in our contingency line that we could absorb that in this year's budget. But in future years, we know what these costs are, we will have to make sure they're included in our budgeting. Or any of our, as we do for any of our hardware and software purchases that we do any year. Um, so it's. Yeah, kind of in line with what we're trying to do with our capital improvements plan. We know we're gonna have to do certain things. After a certain number of years, we know roofs need to be replaced, carpeting needs to be replaced and so on. We can put that on a schedule and just make sure that we capture those things as best we can and make sure we budget for them. Same would be true here. Uh, and know the costs are not going down. I, I think there will be other things that we're, we're gonna be faced here in the next few years that are gonna add to that. But that's part of why we're here, to make sure that we're able to administer that management appropriately. But in the short term, again, we could do this uh, with contingency, commit the fifteen five uh. This year, if that's the route we wanna go, uh, through contingency and then just um, move forward from there as, as we administer our budgets in the future.
To further answer your question about why I start off with twenty five, we've already bought the licenses by computer. So our hundred and twenty two email accounts will be moving, but we already own the software for Microsoft Office, the Word, the Excel, the Outlook. We already own that on our computers now. So my thought process was not only for budgetary purposes, but to do it with the computer switch out. So when we buy the new computers, it would have the user based software on there. Sooner or later, this cost by computer, the office, we're gonna have to get the latest first, two thousand sixteen, two thousand nineteen now. It's two thousand twenty three. So we're gonna have to buy the other computer version later on. My thought process was is to do that as we switch out the computers and move people Office three sixty five.
So how would you like to go about this if, if we move forward with this? Is this something you wanna vote on now? Is this something we wanna just further discuss? Is this just discussion now? Where are we with this?
Yeah, this, so right now consider yourself as uh, you know, committed to the whole mode. Uh, right now, and then what we would do is bring back the resolution for next week, which is a regular meeting, map all this out. And uh, but ourselves, I know this too, that when we're preparing the budget again for twenty four, that we make sure that this is included. Uh, and then obviously there'd be a lot more discussion on budgeting, you know, in the, in future meetings, but for now, let's get us over this hurdle, this initial cost. Pull it from the contingency and get the process rolling. Um, we've had uh. Uh, several now, uh, failures of our email system and that really does put us at a standstill in many cases. Uh, and those, some of those emails, we were not able to recover. We just never got the messages. I think we were able to. Once we realized we had the issue. Worked through it, but that's just not a, a sustainable way of doing business with the county. This, this has to be done.
Commissioners, comments, Commissioner, what's he?
Um, the time you were saying you've been trying to get another quote, but nothing.
So I met with them the day after the last commissioner's meeting where I mentioned this. Um, I sent an email out, I think it was on January twentieth. Said, hey, where's the quote? He said, I was out last week, let me follow up. And I never heard back. And ironically enough, I don't know how this guy got, this gentleman from the same company that I worked with, but a different rep. Emailed Tim and I the other day and hey, I'm your, I'm your rep from this company and everything. And I replied back and I said. To say that my experience with you has been a pleasure, I'd be dishonest. So I, I told you, like, I asked you for a call and I don't have, I'm not gonna wait another month. I told Tim the other day. We could have done this at the last meeting when I brought it to you. I had this cold hand, but I didn't wanna discuss any pricing because I was working with another vendor.
What vendor is this?
That we're going through potentially.
This, this bid right here. Which stands for what?
Here's direct worldwide, I think. They're a fairly large company and they're part of my deal and uh, so is the other one.
So this system will see major improvements.
Oh yeah, absolutely. A lot of the, this is rewind the tapes. When COVID hit, I said in the back of the room, I was like, there's no way I can set people up for remote work. I mean, our email's not capable of it. There were so many things that. Um, we just weren't set up for. And uh, this will allow for online access. You'll be able to access some of your files and whatnot and do word processing, Excel spreadsheets. And like our address book is terrible here. We have no sync amongst everybody. So if somebody leaves, I tell Tim, you know, hey, I deleted this email account, take it out of your list. Otherwise, he sends out a blast email and it comes back undeliverable, cause he doesn't know that I deleted the account, cause a person left. Um, whereas, you know, we'll be able to have, if you wanna send a message to the treasurer's office, you can type in treasurer's office group. We're getting a lot more, this, compare what we have now, compare what we get for the cost increase, it's not apples to apples. There's a lot more features that we'll have.
Commissioner Scott.
Well, I don't have any comment right. He's answering my questions.
We got a lot of money going out and they wanna spend more by jail and we ain't got what we got paid for. I don't quite understand.
Commissioner Simmons.
How much money do we have coming in to, to make sure we can put all this in our budget?
That's Tim's job.
Well, you'll have um. Revenue estimates and everything when we start into the budget process. I actually sit down with treasurer and the equalization director, we go over the military. Where taxable values sit and come up with a revenue estimate along with looking at our state federal funds that come in. Uh, and then begin to build the budget from there. So um. It's a clear answer I can give you right now. We, we do have the uh. Uh, estimates that we're working with with this fiscal year. And again, these costs. Uh, can be covered in that contingency line without harming anything else.
Well, we should be getting more money, cause I just got my thing, my tactical value, I got it yesterday. Until I got that and going up. So you're right, we're gonna have more money.
Um, you know, this is a lot of money coming mid budget wise. It, it, would it be a better idea with? I mean, nothing's obviously crashed quite yet. And the email system is definitely having some issues and, and what the prosecuting attorney just brought to us. Would it be a better idea from a financial standpoint? To plan all of this? But not move forward with it until. Our next budget?
That's an option. Uh, I'm more concerned about the, the next email crash that we have. And maybe we don't recover from it for a week or two. Uh, and what that does to the operation is, is incredible. I alone will easily get fifty emails a day, easily. If we're down three days, I get bombed with a hundred fifty and of course, everybody needs an answer right now. And a hundred of those are, you know, junk, so, but you still have to look at them. Um, you, you get something like, for instance, if a FOIA request comes in and we're down, uh, I've lost time. And if uh, that, we're down for a week, I'm in violation and I don't even know it. Which sets us up for other potential issues. That's relatively minor. I can't imagine what would happen, uh. You know, if we were in the middle of some kind of a, a court transaction and there were arrests involved and, and we don't have the ability to even know what's happening. Uh, that sets us up for further liability. So frankly, I'm in a position to say we need to go now. Uh, just to avoid the risk and the peril that will come from the next crash, which it may not happen. But they do seem to be happening with a little more frequency and a little more severity uh, each time. So I just am. Very apprehensive about prolonging that.
Sure. This is technology. This is today. Email is today. This is like saying twenty years ago, we're not gonna buy any more paper for a month, okay? We can't write a letter, can't send a letter to anybody or anything, cause we quit buying paper for a month. No, this is, this is technology and this is what it costs. This is a cost of doing business. And yes, Mr. Rehu, the county spends a lot of money and from when you sit out there and. Out there in the, in the world and look at the county and say, oh, those guys just spend tons of money. They do. When I came here, I pinched pennies right down to the cost of toilet paper. Uh, thank you for remember. You gotta look beyond that. You gotta take a look and big things cost big money. You know that when you buy a piece of equipment. You know, and it's, it's getting better and in order to do our work, this is, this is like buying paper thirty years ago. You wouldn't stop buying paper because you gotta still write letters. Email is letters. This is it. So you're, we're already spending money for email.
Very little. And actually, you had mentioned about getting our cost back for the days that we were down. We're spending eight hundred and fifteen dollars a year for a hundred and twenty two people. So I wasn't gonna call for our six bucks.
Yeah, I'd like to say so. Um, the first time that I heard about an email crash, you know, I was really concerned about it. You know, we've got a whole county we're trying to run here and the email is basically our platform, our base in order to communicate. And I almost feel like we're negligent if we make a, a pretty fast move on. Making sure that we're getting a better system in place. That a big crash doesn't happen. Like Tim would say, if we'd have a big crash, that could be devastating to our. Our, our daily operations. Um, I really think that we need to make a move on this as soon as possible.
I just wish we would have got more, uh, I wish we. I just wish we would have got more. Uh, I wish we would have got at least one other bid. I thank you for trying. But I I really do wish that we would have had some type of comparison here.
I can tell you, like, it's eight dollars per user per month. Um, it's ninety-six dollars a year per user. So if you look at that seventy-one, seventy-six, we're getting the my ideal pricing. I don't know how much better we're gonna get. I can go out and get other quotes, but I don't think the price is gonna change that much. It's a subscription service and Microsoft sets the price.
Commissioner Simmons?
Um, these twenty, you wanna start with twenty-five computers originally, right?
Correct.
Okay. Have those computers been identified to where, who will have those computers? Have you identified them?
The thought was more towards the sheriff's office. And if Karen has money, obviously, probably the downstairs corridor here. So it may be more than twenty-five out of the gate.
You wanna start with users, not computers, right?
Correct. Hundred twenty-two users are moving email.
Users, not computers.
I meant users.
Yeah.
Users I work with.
Everybody. Hundred twenty-two users, their emails will, it's the software on the computer. That's the twenty-five.
Okay.
Sir, go ahead, Commissioner Mayhew.
Mr. Scott misunderstood me. I believe in keeping what you have. This problem here is bad. We need it. Before we spend money on something new, we always try to pay for what we had. That is my you and prosecutor, you need computers. That's part of existing. We have to do this. We don't have to do the jail. Do this first. If we have money left over, do the jail. That is my theory. Mr. Scott misunderstood me. When I, when we buy a piece of equipment, we pay for that before we buy the next one.
We gotta be able to pay for it.
That's exactly.
We gotta know where it's coming from.
Exactly.
That's one of the resolutions, right?
So there'll be more to come. Thank you. Thank you.
Sure. I told Tim this is gonna be an expensive meeting.
You could have gave us a heads up. Item ninety, appointment for chief deputy medical examiner. Oklahoma County Chief Medical Examiner, Dr. Roshan Mahabharan? Has formally requested the appointment of Dr. Donald Higgs of Chief Deputy Medical Examiner for Oklahoma County. Dr. Higgs recently accepted a position with Michigan Institute of Forensic Science and Medicine, the county vendor for medical examiner services. Tim, would you like to take the floor?
Yeah, this is a pretty routine. You've seen uh over the years as commissioners, uh various names put forward to be deputy medical examiners. This one's a chief deputy, so uh one step below the actual medical examiner. Uh, counties actually, under the statute, have to appoint these positions. Even though we have uh uh the Michigan Forensics Group is our contracted medical examiner, we still need to approve the the individuals uh for their official capacities operating in the county. Um, this one, you see a resolution already in front of you because we've done these before. It's a very routine one to just put the new name in. Uh, the uh vendor has already um uh vouched that the individual has the qualifications, is a licensed physician. Uh, and they're actually pretty excited to bring him on board. That's one I would be comfortable if you wanted to pass that as a resolution today. It would be fine. It's, there's no new information that's gonna come. Uh, this, by the way, um, uh, is, you know, would take us through the end of the month. We have uh our our medical examiner agreement expires uh on March thirty-first. So this appointment theoretically could only be for a month if we decide to change vendors. But by your um two weeks from now, um, if the next committee, the whole meeting, we're scheduled to have the bits in for the RFP. So if we're gonna change, obviously you'd know it then. But be that as it may, um, I think this is a good move and it doesn't cost us anything to do it.
This is not committing us to anything beyond March thirty-first, correct?
Not. It's just simply naming this one individual as the chief uh deputy medical examiner. And what we will do uh when you've made the decision on on where to go with your next um agreement, whether it's with this firm or a different firm, you will have not only a resolution to approve that contract, but probably a resolution naming the individuals in the various capacities for the life of the contract. Which I can't remember if we did. I think we did it for a four-year term. I think that's what the statute says. So you'll see dual resolutions. You might see these names again. You might see different names, but we will clean all that up when the time comes.
You would like a a motion for this?
You could, yes, that I mean, it's a safe one to do today.
I'll make that motion.
Support.
A motion with support from Commissioner Scott to a appointment of chief deputy medical examiner. Any further discussion? Roll call vote.
Jenny David?
Yes.
Roger Mayhew?
Yes.
Charles Wiltsey?
Yes.
Brenda Simmons?
Yes.
Frank Scott?
Yes.
Item six, excuse me, item nine E, Ryan Veder, planning and zoning administrator, related to appointments to the joint the joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Board. The Joint West Branch Community Airport Zoning Ordinance was adopted on December fifth, nineteen sixty-nine, under the Airport Zoning Act. Act two thirty-three of nineteen fifty being MCL two-five-nine dot four-three-one. In each case, we're in, oh, geez, we're in a port and where an airport hazard area exists in connection with a publicly owned airport, the Board of Commissioners of each county involved must appoint three members in the operating agency and the Michigan Air and Addicts Commission must each appoint one member to a joint airport zoning board. Two of the members appointed by the Board of Commissioners of each county involved must be from a township or townships within which the hazard area is located and one must be from the part of the county outside the townships where the hazard area is located. Members of joint zoning boards must be compensated for services actually rendered at a rate established by the Airport Operating Agency and approved by the Michigan Air and Addicts Commission and shall be reimbursed by any actual unnecessary expenses incurred by them in the performance of their duties. Mr. Veder, come on up. Would you like to explain?
Morning.
Morning.
So the um the joint, the joint West Branch Community Airport Zonings have actually been in effect since um actually January of nineteen seventy. Currently, what usually happens is the review of this gets triggered by an an application in this particular case, cell tower application, West Branch Township. Upon review of the board, the board has not met since twenty eighteen. Um, all those members on that board, it actually, it's those membership dates have expired and and unfortunately, three of those members are actually deceased. So I'm in the process of getting new membership from all three of the counties and from the city of West Branch. So we can get this board back on the board. Uh, if you've seen the ordinance in your um packet, it is, it's dated and need to be updated. Probably one of the first things that we'll do is update that. And get some rules for the procedure as well. So um, that's basically what I come with you today. Mr. Evergreen and Mr. Baller both live in the airport zoning district. Uh, Mr. Nichols actually lives outside of the airport zoning district, so he would satisfy our responsibility for holding my company for our membership. I'm actually, I did receive a third member for Airnet County yesterday, which I will get with them and I have their board approve them. The, and the city manager, I believe, or is it the county administrator for Gladwin County is in the process of finding three or Gladwin County. Um, we've also spoken to John Donser, West Branch. The city of West Branch actually gets one member as an operating, it's part of the operating agency of the airport as well. So John is supposed to be looking into that for me. Uh, so yeah, we just need to get three more members and we'll point it and approve it.
Is this just for update purposes or is there an issue that's brought this to light?
So, yeah, there was a cell tower application in West Branch Township. Um, it is um in an area where they need, based on the map for the ordinance. I believe they're capped at about twelve fifty feet. This was a hundred and fifty-foot cell tower. So what happens in that process is those cell tower companies have to apply with the state of Michigan to get a Michigan tall structures permit. In this particular case, since the air, it is not in conformance of the airport zoning board height limitations for that area. It actually comes back to the airport zoning board, which we will actually have to deny their permit. Then the F E A, FAA actually does a review. We have eight departments that actually have different opinions on the structure. They'll give that to the airport zoning board. And they'll, they'll look at different items to see if this is gonna be a problem for air traffic in the area. And they'll issue that report. Once we have the the original joint community airport zoning board approved, those members actually will appoint five members for a zoning board of appeals, um, which then that application will go to the zoning board of appeals and they'll make their decision based on a number, a bunch of data. And a lot of that comes from the F A. So we're kinda in this process where we need to get them appointed so we can get a zoning board of appeals appointed so we can look at, look at the um application that's being proposed in West Branch Township.
So we're basically approving what, approving these, these three members, correct?
Three members for uh Oklahoma County's portion, a membership of four. Okay.
Commissioner Simmons, did you have a question?
We talking about that tower that's going on there by Peach Lake Road?
That is the proposed tower.
Is there another proposal? Or is that?
No, that proposal was actually approved by the West Branch Township Planning Commission, I believe, last month. Fortunately, I received an email the other day. Um, that approval may be in question.
Um, yes, it may be in question.
Know the entire details of that, but apparently they they might be rejecting the application.
That's correct.
Incorrect information. However, the application will still exist. I would imagine they'll probably come back to the township with the correct information to try to get this approved again. Um, so in that particular case, well, hopefully we'll be ready by then.
Okay.
Commissioner Mayhew, questions? Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, just due to lack of activity throughout the years.
Due to lack of activity, yeah. Um, and I was unaware of that. I I've been aware of the airport zoning probably for six or seven years now, just in my, just in my job and and being with West Branch Township as well too. However, I was not aware that I was responsible. Nelson Town, fairly recently, so. But we can crack that and and get everything back up. Yes.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, I sat on planning, county planning for four years. And I've been on the airport board and I've been well versed with what's going on here. You know, we like, like Ryan says, the county is a portion of the arm, uh, of the airport. And uh, we, we have to, we have to do this. This is just another committee that's become obsolete. And now it's becoming attention, you know? So for our portion, we just, we just need to pass our portion.
The ordinance has been in place for a very long time and I know it just dropped off there for probably twenty years.
True.
And and now with cell towers being a little bit more prevalent than they used to be, um, it is important to make sure we we put those guidelines in place and then make sure that it's safer for people coming in.
Is this a, this airport zoning board, are they somebody that will only meet when there's an issue?
Traditionally, in the last three minutes that I've seen, they generally meet administratively once a year.
Okay.
Um, so the board itself would be, you know, if there's gonna be changes to the ordinance itself, then that board would probably have to make, discuss those changes. But I don't see this board having to meet more than maybe once, maybe twice a year. Um, where the joy, the airport zoning board of appeals may, depending on the number of applications that come for cell towers or other, other tall structures, they may need, may need to meet two, three, four times a year, depending on that. Uh, there could be years where they don't meet at home as well, so.
So who will be responsible? I, what I just read there says that these, these board members will be uh paid for attending the meetings, correct? Is it, who, who's gonna be responsible for that?
Initially, discussion, I'm, I'm.
Tim, do you have the answer?
I don't have to tap my head. I was a little confused with the language in the statute. That board makes, you know, certain determinations, which is very unusual. Usually that's left to a county board, you know, a governing board to do that. But this, this involves three counties, right? So I I don't know the answer to that, yeah.
I thought you read it, that in the description that the the county, the the airport authority.
No.
For that. You sure?
I I believe in the past, it has gone through Oklahoma County as one of the operators of it, but I will, I will double check on that.
So then it'll be the response, the responsibility of the county to reimburse, correct? That's what I thought.
Which if that was the case, then it could go through, you know, the zoning, the planning and zoning department as it is now. Um, that'll be up to be a discussion. I'll have to look in.
You're, you're just, you said members of the joint zoning boards must be compensated for services actually rendered at a rate established by the op, Airport Operating Agency.
But it doesn't say who's gonna.
Isn't that the authority?
The Airport Operating Agency would be uh, would be the city of West Branch and.
The Airport Authority Board.
Makes a determination of how much, but it doesn't say that they're going to be the ones responsible for the cost.
I will have to look into that.
So there'll be more to come on this next week?
I I would think probably would be, but because the authority board has a whole separate contract or a whole separate budget.
Right.
And all monetary costs for the airport are taken out of that. The county and the city only make fifty-five, forty-five percent contributions toward that. I would, I would assume that this is really owned by the airport authority. It's just law that says that we have to make these appointments for our for our entity, just like Air and X making three for theirs.
We just need to verify this.
We'll find out, yeah.
Absolutely. Uh, Commissioner Simmons?
How did you come up with these three, three names, right?
Yep.
So one of the three names, um, Ben Evergreen, the current manager out there at the airport and was on the previous board uh back in from the minutes from twenty eighteen, along with Scott Bell as well. Um, Jeff Nichols is a veteran of the Air Force. Um, trying to find some people who are to keep kind of the continuity together, people that were familiar with what was happening in the past and get a new individual on those, you know, too.
What did Mr. Nichols do in the Air Force?
I'm not positive, but he doesn't know a ton about airports and things, but he seems like he's very um very astute on finding information out as well, too.
Did he request this or did you request him?
I did ask.
Okay, did you research about anybody else that may have um information, like air, airport information, you know, that's worked with airports before?
The, the members that were on the airport board previously, I I don't think they were actually working with a full membership. And it looks as if um two out, two out of the three members were currently on the the previous board. I have not gone out and really solicited a lot of people for it.
I just wondered how you selected it was on.
Any other questions? Thanks, Mr. Veder.
Thank you.
Have a good day. Item nine act, draft standards of conduct policy. The most current draft of the proposed standards of conduct policy includes a revised section on the investigative procedure as follows, as follows. Allegations of violation of this standards of conduct policy shall be promptly investigated by the county administrator, an independent individual or a team of independent individuals as determined by the Board of Commissioners. Results of this investigation shall be communicated in writing to the county administrator, Board of Commissioners and or other appropriate designated personnel. The intent of the revised language is to reserve to is to reserve to the Board of Commissioners the right to determine who will lead any investigation into allegations of policy violation and to assure direct communication about investigation results to the board of, to the board and other personnel as appropriate. Tim?
So this is also intended not to bog anything down. So if there were um an allegation that there was a violation of this policy, if it was relatively minor, uh, say an employee misused a piece of equipment, um, we can certainly investigate that internally. That becomes a disciplinary matter more than it is even a, an issue of the standard of conduct. So that doesn't preclude that from happening as it should routinely. But at the same time, if there were a more significant allegation, uh, just uh playing off example I used at the last meeting, if there was an allegation that a planning commission member had um I'm not thinking of the right word, but had a conflict with a developer. Uh, that's something that you might wanna escalate to some other independent person to make that investigation report back to you. Uh, and if needed, then at that point, it could result in removal of that individual from the planning commission if if it were that serious. So it hopefully covers all those bases, but at all times, uh, the allegations come to the board. You make the determination uh as to how that moves forward and you are included in that communication chain as results come in.
Comments? Commissioner Wiltsey?
Uh, no, I won't.
Commissioner Scott?
Well, that's fine with me. Changes are fine with me.
Commissioner Simmons?
So what we're saying then is that. If something goes on that really bad, like say um in the register needs off sheriff's department or whatever, there would be an outside individual that would investigate that.
That's not what this is saying. It's saying that we will make that determination pending on the allegation.
Okay.
Am I reading that correctly? But it will be communicated with the Board of Commissioners, correct?
Right, so it would be communicated with the board. The board will decide this can be done administratively or we need to have an individual brought in.
Commissioner Mayhew?
That was me.
I in this verbiage. Uh it it does say that the Board of Commissioners will be uh informed, correct?
Yes.
So if there is an issue that's taking the complaint that's happened. And this needs to be discussed as far as um. Who's gonna be brought in to do a further investigation or if anybody will be brought in? Is that something that will require a close session? Is that something we're able to talk about freely or is that something we'll determine? At the time?
Yeah, this is, well, the there's there's always a possibility if there were, you know, some legal component to this and we needed to bring the attorney involved. Obviously, that would go to a closed session. This, though, is intended that if there is an allegation, it's discussed at an open meeting and you decide. We need to escalate to bring in a independent investigator or you're satisfied that it's gonna be handled. Administratively with reports coming back to the board as to the result of whatever that investigation is. So um I think always just keep in mind that it's only those special circumstances. That would allow you to get into closed session and you would not necessarily meet that threshold just from an allegation. Um so that I I think does. Yep, if you want transparency, it definitely does that. Uh it can have the uh. Effect of dampening one's enthusiasm for making the allegation, but at the same time. It's also saying if you're gonna make this allegation, you better be on your game because if it's fruitless. We're all gonna know that and that's that's fine, too. So I I I think it's you you're gonna see maybe a. Uh you know, diminishing of any frivolous type of uh allegation. I can say it's gonna eliminate it. But I think if it gets to your level, it's significant. It needs to have some additional. Eyes on it and you have to make a determination uh later on after the investigation, whether there was a violation of what we're gonna do about it.
It's a standard of conduct, so I'm um. Say it's say it's a individual in the public that has a complaint about a certain department, whether they were treated poorly or whatever that may be. Who then makes a determination if that is 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 it the uh? Elected official of that department that makes it this the determination prior to getting to to this level?
Well, it you know, let's distinguish between the the complaint of poor service versus uh standard of conduct. What this. Policy is getting into are things like um uh. Maybe a a a vote is biased because a member of whatever body it is has a. Uh some kind of a relationship with a vendor, for instance, that's biasing their judgment. Um so that's one level versus somebody that comes in and says, I went to get a dog license from the treasurer and they maybe go get a. Uh certificate that says my dog's been vaccinated against rabies. I didn't like that. Well, that's not a conduct violation. I mean, they're simply having to fulfill obligations versus. The treasurer's office um has um, you know, a side contract with a veterinarian to do something and they're referring everybody over there to get their. Rabies shots. Well, now that's a conduct violation. That's a uh you know, bias that's um that that shouldn't exist. Uh other things that we get into are. Use of uh county property. So if uh. Ryan is taking the new pickup for uh planning and zoning and he's using that to haul waste over over the weekend out of his yard. Well, that's gonna be a conduct violation that's gonna come here. Probably in that case, one that you would refer just simply for disciplinary action versus having to bring a third party in. But it's the really the the deep ones, the the example that I talked about before where you have a planning commissioner who has a relationship with the developer, the conflict of interest, not only is it appear, but it's real. It actually was there. And that individual went through the process, did not disclose this. That potentially is gonna undo. A a inaction of even this body, if it were rezoning, for instance, uh because of that bias. And that's pretty significant. And if that individual didn't understand that that was a conflict. They need to be brought in here likely again at a public meeting with the potential being dismissed from the planning commission. You know, for for that infraction. So that's one that might require somebody else, the independent person to come in to make the connection, to make sure that that. Relationship with the developer really exists. And those are facts, either they are or they aren't. In the case that uh we discussed, there was a transaction, a property transaction. Well, we can go to see that that. Individual buy this property from the developer at a reduced price. That's very normal. But you probably want somebody independent to do that investigation. So it gives that more credibility. Who that might be? I mean, it could be the attorneys. It could be uh maybe uh. You know, an assessor uh from one of the townships that's involved, whoever, but you'd have that opportunity then to discuss that. So just to distinguish this from the day-to-day things, and these are uh generally. Biases or misuse of equipment that is above and beyond the daily. I didn't like the answer I got from that.
What about misuse of authority?
Well, depending again on what it is, uh if it's uh you know, something that's happening, let's say, you know, it's the authority, let's. Take on the sheriff here for a little bit. So an officer pulls somebody over and uh they feel that they were, you know. Officer abused the authority, uh that probably becomes a criminal activity. Well, now you don't have to worry about it because it's gonna be taken care of in the courts. You're aware of it. But you don't want to interfere with that. Um if it's uh. I go into uh.
Can I stop you there for? So this would be my question. So if we're at that level right there. Versus them investigating their own. To as far as a complaint. That's where I would I would prefer a non-biased party coming in and doing a very thorough investigation and it being done. So there is no bias.
Right.
So that's what I want somehow this. To take the responsibility off of them.
Right.
I would never want to investigate my own.
Right, so I'm drawing the line with that example. If it's a criminal activity, it's gonna get into the criminal justice. You don't want to interfere with that. It'll take care of itself. But if it's something, let's say I go into a business. I go into a hardware store and uh the hardware store, they uh also supply, I don't know, um. Stain for the uh. High Banks property uh and so on. So I go into the hardware store and I wanna buy a hammer and I say, you know, I'm the county administrator. And I decide whether or not we're gonna buy our stain from you. If you give me a discount on this hammer, you know, I'll make sure that you get. Deal. All right, so while there I think is probably a criminal element there, but you're gonna get it first. You're gonna get the complaint that says he's coming in here abusing his position and and getting a special deal. Well, that's one I think you're gonna want that independent person to investigate and then deliberately be interviewing people and and everything that goes into that. Reporting back to you and then you make your determination on what happens to me as a result. Uh in a case like that, I hope it would result in termination and that uh if there were criminal referral, that 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 could happen at that point. But that's where you would want that independent. Third party to come in and make that investigation, not somebody who's, you don't want uh necessarily Kelly. Uh secretary in our office investigating that. You want somebody that's completely outside of. What's the the people who are involved has no influence. One way or another, just gives it an honest view and gives you a report on what their findings are.
I don't think it's any different than a. A contractor comes to me and wants to talk to me because I'm a commissioner and. And let's make a deal. You put the windows in my house and I'll make sure that you get that contract. That's a breach of code of conduct.
Right.
Absolutely. Um. Uh I I and then I think we what we haven't talked about is the division of elected officials versus. County also. I I I don't think this applies to. This is going to apply to every department within a county. Is this?
Most of the examples that we um end up dealing with here end up having a financial tie to it in one way or another. Somebody. Influenced someone and got a deal. All right, some kind of transaction gets involved. This would apply in that case because you're controlling the finances. You have every right to investigate. Any allegation or wrongdoing that goes on. Now, I've also, uh when I presented this at the department head meeting. Made very clear to our uh all of our departments, this isn't really a discretionary policy. This is a policy that if we don't have in place, we can have the federal government come back and say, because you don't have this in place. You need to, not only will you no longer qualify for federal money, we want back money that we've given you in the past. But this was made very clear to me in an RFP that we're gonna issue here for uh transit using the. The transit monies that we get through the state. To let this bid. One of the requirements that we have in there is that we have a code of conduct policy that we will enforce if there is some kind of shenanigan going on with a potential bidder on that project. Uh I've not been through the wringer like we went through just to get the RFP approved by the state. Uh with the language that they wanted to see. That's how serious it is. So even though in that case it's a transit issue. If the clerk somehow does something that violates this, because it's part of our organization, potentially we could lose that funding at transit. Even though the clerk isn't directly involved in transit, it's the county that they're looking at now as an entity and that's the the measure they're gonna use. Luckily, these things happen. They're few and far between and usually when they do happen, they're so extreme, the the answer is very clear as to what needs to occur. Uh but nevertheless, I understand the safeguards. You know, another example I'll give you just very briefly, having to deal with housing money, a city in Illinois, a city manager was. Taking money out of those funds for her own use. Uh it turned out over the years to be millions of dollars and it went into a very extravagant horse farm and. Uh what got people wondering is we know what the city manager earns and it is nothing like. They should be able to buy this big horse ranch and have all these award-winning Arabian horses and things. It just something didn't match up and somebody looked into it and sure enough, they found that fraud was occurring. Uh now. That means the whole policy isn't necessarily gonna prevent that, but it does give a process. This is, well, if it does happen, we're gonna follow up on it. We're gonna take it ser- seriously and take what the actions need to be taken to correct that.
But today's question isn't total. Code of conduct, it is. What how the Board of Commissioners play into it? That's the question today.
Right, and you play into a lot. If it has a dollar tied to it, you you're in it.
Commissioner Simmons?
Some. Some of it goes in the in into the courts, like you said, but. The courts. Have evidently, I don't know how how I'll get started. Have have personnel in the same department investigate the situation that's happened in the past. So I mean, that's if that's up to the courts, we haven't been saying it, right?
Right, now the court, I did it to the policy, the code of judicial conduct, the code of the Michigan Trial Court employees. And the code and guidelines for the juvenile probation officers, you know, attached by reference. They have their process and they're actually handed down by the Supreme Court in their case uh as to what they do and as, you know, with the separate branch of government. Yeah, that's legit. I was very uh happy to see that they had these already in place, though, and you'll see a lot of the language mirrors uh what's in this policy, too.
I I have some more questions on this, but I'll I'll uh touch base with you throughout the week.
Okay.
So we'll discuss this at next next week's meeting as well.
Uh we can, again, next week is a regular meeting. Would you rather have it on the next committee?
The whole, yeah. Okay, item ten administrator's report.
Okay, um. Good thing, so a question of procedure for the board. We have a. Contract that came in for housing inmates for Calcasas County. It's a pretty standard contract. The. Pricing is the same as the county has uh applied to other counties that that come in. I think it was an Osco, it was one of those counties. Um question for you is, do you want to see that at committee the whole of two weeks? Are you comfortable enough with the concept that we present that for approval next Thursday? It's a contract that's already been reviewed by uh our attorneys. Uh we actually have the same attorney uh representing um. Ogumah as they do in Calcasas. Uh we've got a waiver of conflict in. They've reviewed the contract. It's, you know, passed their muster. Uh so it's just a matter of, you know, do we do it next week or do we go through the committee of the whole? Again, it's pretty routine. But with three new commissioners, I don't know how comfortable you are just moving forward with a resolution.
In my opinion, I think it needs to be a committee of the whole. I I would like them just to see it all.
What does this pertaining?
Um when we have inmates that are brought from other counties, that we have a contract and there's a per day rate that's paid and there are a number of uh. Uh rules in there about how those inmates are treated. In effect, they're they're in the custody of Ogumah County, but it's gonna be the jail policies that apply. Uh it gets into uh issues like medical care if it's needed. Who's gonna pay for what?
Transportation.
Yeah, transportation.
Everything. It's a breakdown. It's interesting to see. Are you okay? You guys okay with putting that on the committee of the whole? There's no urgency to that, correct?
Their urgency. There, okay. No.
Okay.
All right, um. Last meeting, we talked about, you know, potential uh. This meeting of the month or the during the fifth week of the month, uh having a meeting to go over ARPA and uh term goals. And if we could, if you're interested, if we could lock down the date. There is a fifth Thursday on the thirtieth. Uh we also have, obviously, Friday is open, too, on the thirty-first. When we did the ARPA meeting last year, we did it on a Friday at eleven o'clock and it did, you know, seemed to work well. Um but the um. For the posting purposes and so forth, um if if you're available, if you're interested in doing that, um. Yeah. What do you think?
Your proposal is the thirtieth, so Thursday evening, Thursday morning?
I the whole day is open for me, so whatever is best for the board.
I I like the Thursday morning. I have some flexibility.
Thursday morning?
I prefer Friday, but I'm that either way I can make something work. I prefer the thirty-first, so there's no time restraints. For me, but. I can figure it out. Opinion, the thirtieth or thirty-first, Thursday or Friday?
What's easier for you?
Um either one, really. I. You guys have it on Friday, I'll probably be your goal. A small chance. But uh morning works better for me, but I I do. Think it's a good idea to have the meeting because there's some stuff on there for me that the price has changed or whatnot.
Commissioner? I'm 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 easy either way. Thursday, Friday is good for me.
Commissioner Scott?
Uh morning's better.
Thursday, Friday?
Thursday.
So we have a consensus for Thursday? Time?
Please, nine eighty o'clock.
You guys made that determination. I I can't guarantee I'll be here, so you don't you don't need me.
You got Brenda.
Yeah, Brenda.
Well, I think maybe we should have it on Friday.
I could be here Friday morning, but I I can't guarantee a Thursday, so but again, I'm only one vote, so.
Well, I mean, I think it's important that we're all here, it's.
Friday's okay with me.
Friday morning?
Yeah, that's.
Nine AM, eight thirty, too early for you, Brenda?
No, that's good. Even eight o'clock's okay. Doesn't really matter.
Eight thirty or nine, board?
Eight thirty. So it's better.
Eight thirty to thirty-first? I'll bring you donuts. Anything else?
Yeah, a few things. Um I do um. On a report that over at the annex, those lights that were voted on a couple of meetings ago, those new LED lights. Are uh significantly apparently brighter than what was thought, so they didn't have to install all those lights over at the annex. Question that came to me was, do we send them back and get a refund or do we hang on to them? I'd said hang on to them because if you've been down my corridor lately, it's pretty dark down there. So one of those lights might be really nice to be installed there. Uh and it is an LED light, so it's another one of those energy-saving type things. We'll talk about that for this building when we do the ARPA meeting here at the end of the month. Uh that may be something that we want to do. A little more extensively uh in particularly in this building. So anyway, we hung on to those rather than return them. I'm very confident we'll be able to find homes for them relatively quickly. Uh and a reminder that um. We had the kids' day scheduled for the February ninth meeting that was rescheduled down for next Thursday, March ninth. So let's take that schedule and move it forward. Uh so we'll have each of us will have a.
Yeah.
I think the sixth grader that'll be shadowing us after the morning. Be able to sit up here at the board meeting and have that whole experience, too, like we did last year. So be prepared next Thursday, we will have the. The school kids will be.
I had a question because I didn't see the email on that. Last year, we contributed five dollars for a pizza. I had a question because I didn't see the email on that. Last year, we contributed five dollars for a pizza for the kids. I didn't see that this year. Are they, are we still?
Oh, they're doing it because I, I gave money. I didn't, she came and collected.
Right, this is an email or who were you giving money to? Okay. Did they ask us? Did anybody ask it in email?
Yes, I gave mine.
Oh.
I never saw it.
I didn't see an email. She came in around and asked me for it.
Okay.
I think that's all she did was, she saw people and asked.
Okay.
You can go.
That's it? County Minister? Okay. Did you guys have any, any?
Opia is a committee update. There was some discussion.
We'll be able to report back on that at next committee of the whole. We did send the emails out to the groups that we, we thought would be interested. Uh, we have heard back from one already. He's very interested, was a prosecutor. Uh, actually, I think that was within a couple of hours of the emails going out. We heard that one back. But, uh, those, those are out. We just don't have, uh, any replies yet.
Do you continue? Well, we have that in the committee of the whole? Okay, perfect. Item eleven, elected officials and department head reports. Clerk?
Uh, Brett Gildner, you're Ogumah County Clerk.
I'm sorry.
It's okay. I just want you guys to hear these dates because they're very important.
Very good.
Um, for, to take these dates with you for your committees that you're on. If anybody wants to put a question on the ballot for August, the deadline is May second. And then the November election, the deadline is August first. But it needs to be filed by.
What was that date again? I'm sorry, Brett. I didn't.
For the August election, May second.
Okay.
And then November election, August first.
Is that it?
Um, for this week, yes, that's it.
Treasurer?
Good morning, Karen McCosky, Ogumah County Treasurer. I just wanted to give you an update on our land bank. We sold our property, our first one. For fifteen hundred dollars, that property was located at twenty four thirty six East Fourth Street in Prescott. One of the neighbors purchased and they're going to be planting trees to create green space in that neighborhood. So, yeah, some good work going on. We're still working on a grant. We put a couple of roadblocks, so we're looking at a round two application process. Guaranteed funds, so hoping to grab some funding to continue the good work at the land bank. Um, our next meeting is scheduled for April twelfth at eleven o'clock.
Was there anybody that attended the, uh, grant seminar from the land bank? That Michigan Works held last week?
Unfortunately, no. But we're going to continue to work on our grants and we have support from the state. They're, they're, um, happy to help in any way we need them, so.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Randy, do you have any updates?
Sure.
I got my equalization letter.
I got mine yesterday.
Director, yes, assessment change notices have all been out the mail and, uh, most people have significant increases this year.
Thank you.
And you will, you will see in the, uh, equalization report in April will be coming, but, uh, uh, also as Remind Coordinator for the Remind Committee, uh, thank you for passing the resolution for the contracts. I do have that here for Jenny to sign today. Uh, Jeremy Card and, uh, Tim Lapo both signed their contracts already, so we've got those. And discussed the last, the committee of the whole, and, and I apologize, I wasn't able to be here, but, uh, whether Jeremy Card would be interested, be in the, uh,
Yeah, what is?
The, uh,
Representative, county representative.
Yeah, the county representative. I'm the administrator. He's representative of Kid's right title, but, uh, uh, Jeremy is interested in that. Uh, when the county updated their plan several years ago, like seven or eight years ago, they write in the plan, you appointed Lapo engineering as the plan coordinator. And so we may need to, uh, it, because one of the things, it never goes up for bid. It's just Lapo just tells us what the prices are every year and it goes up every year and, and we do that, so. Uh, I do think it's something maybe we should look at, taking bids on because there are other engineering or surveying firms that may be interested, but we may need to amend the plan. And just, I, I'm not sure how to word it, but at least to, to make you aware that right now, it just says the plan that Lapo and Associates is our coordinator.
Probably have more information to come then.
Yeah, I will get copies of the agreements for you at the committee of the whole meeting coming up and then you can look at it and actually, I'll meet with Tim ahead of time, see if he thinks we should, if it needs to be amended or if it's just, because it really doesn't list the date. It was, it's just it's named in the, in the plans. I think you might need to amend the plan.
Can you give a brief explanation as far as why, uh, the, the big increase individuals are seeing?
The typical sales were significantly higher than what we had previous, you know, as an assessor, when we look at sales and just give an example, a couple of years ago, the typical wholesale, maybe a hundred thousand dollars is we're entering deeds in our office, those houses are sold for a hundred and fifty to a hundred and sixty five thousand. Uh, we've had more houses sales at over three hundred thousand dollars and you know, I've ever seen in my personal township. I would, in the last ten years, I get one or two a year. This year, I had like ten or twelve that were over three hundred thousand dollars and uh, it's just the prices are amazing right now. And so that's why in all of the residential appraisals, at least are based on the actual sales. Uh, the commercial industrial is a little different because we do studies on those, the agricultural, but, uh, but the residential sales, I think, just because cost of building materials, people are buying houses instead of buying bacon and bacon land prices are not going up very much. Uh, at least not in small parcels. Big parcels are going up, but but the home prices have really gone up.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mr. Spencer, do you have any updates for us?
No, ma'am.
Terrif?
Well, Sheriff.
Good morning.
Good morning. He's got a couple of things. Um, January stats, I sent that over, three hundred, three hundred and forty two complaints. It's been busy every month, really. Um, I don't have stats for animal control because starting February, um, what I did is had him start doing dailies. Send them into us so we can download them, so we can see what his, uh, stats are. So it'll be, it'll be set up similar to this.
I can see more color pictures from him?
Uh, if he wants to, I'll leave that open for him. So anyway, that, that will soon be coming. Another thing, you're not, you're not going to see the animal control truck out until I get a crash bar in front of it. Um, because I want to make sure that, uh, we're protected up front with deer. We hit one of them headlight assemblies. That's probably twelve, fifteen hundred bucks alone, so kind of hold them off until we get that bumper. And it's coming. So as soon as we get that, we get the radio on it, we'll, we'll put them in there. That's all I have. Any questions?
Thank you.
Are we going to have the LE meeting right after this?
Oh, you gotta split.
Um, we should. It's probably relatively short.
Yeah.
Was it posted?
I turned to Kelly and asked, I don't know.
Law enforcement?
Law enforcement committee, was it posted? Isn't that what we determined?
That was one of those standard ones that we're going to make it standard after.
We can get, we'll get, if it's not posted, we'll just have to.
Yeah, we'll do it next, get it next Thursday.
Right, thank you.
Thank you. Any, any elected officials or department heads on the phone? I missed anybody in the room? Anybody on the phone? Let's see anybody.
I will.
Okay.
Electoral officials.
Pardon me?
Gentlemen here is, uh, representing an elected state official.
Perfect.
You only get three minutes then.
Item twelve, managers from the floor. I don't believe we have any. Item thirteen, motions for adoption. The commissioners. Item fourteen, committee reports. Commissioner Wiltzy?
Um, I mean, Commissioner Scott, you know, we're both on the, the roads and bridges commission. I was at the last meeting, Commissioner Scott, I was at yesterday morning's meeting. Uh, one big thing that we have is our one pit is almost completely depleted for aggregate material that we need for our roads. Obviously, we still use a lot of aggregate. So they have another chunk of ground that they want to, uh, be able to start digging on. But through the state right now, um, the state is asking for mineral lease per yard price. So that's a big, that's a big chunk of money. Once you start every single yard coming out of that pit, that we have to pay the state. Really, to me, doesn't make any sense. Uh, doesn't make any sense to the road commissioners. They tried to reach out to Rep. Holden Lee, uh, who's our new state rep. Um, they have her back from one of his office members. Haven't really got much back in terms of anything they're looking for. So, um, I have stepped up. Um, I got to know Rep. Holden a little bit through my campaigning this past summer and I'm going to, uh, in my work when I'm in Lansing, I'll be meeting with him um, in regards to this matter, because again, it's something that's going to cost the county a lot, a lot of money. Uh, and I'd imagine there's a number of counties that are also really concerned about this. So, uh, that's where I'm at with the road commission, um. EDC, we let the new officers, all the officers stayed the same. Uh, Penny had sent a letter into, uh, our director, um, with the request regarding ARPA funds. Um, we talked about different types of community relations. Uh, we're getting more involved with, uh, all the local townships. Uh, going to have a, a little more input to townships with the EDC's doing, which I think is really important. Um, Transit, uh, two weeks ago, we're still on a two week schedule. Uh, we felt that there was enough, you know, work there needed with this new committee that was formed. So we're still meeting every two weeks. We'll have another meeting, um, next Tuesday with Ray. Uh, we all know that we're working on this, this committee. Uh, we have, uh, the construction for the new buildings that Tim, Tim is working on. I will be um, working with Tim a little more on that, so we're all on the same page, so we can make sure that all is continuing to move forward. And the bidding process is getting where it needs to be because we're already getting into spring. Um, we, I said, I told Ray after our last meeting that we decided you do not need to go out and have these individuals that are coming in that are ready, have their CBL testing and approved, that they have to go back through all the medical again. So Ray was reaching out to those two people, um, that have the current CBL and that everything's updated. So hopefully, uh, hopefully that go, you know, goes well and that they'll be able to come on board because we are shorthanded. Um, conversation about Saturday service is, is top priority. You realize that's, um, pretty much the biggest, uh, downfall right now with the transit, with what our current transit, uh, members want is Saturday service. So we're going to continue to be optimistic and stay course for, uh, April first. Uh, hopefully Saturday service starting back up. That's a, that's a goal of ours. And that's still, uh, is the direction we're heading. Um, the EMS, I had an EMS meeting yesterday. Um, EMS is, is shorthanded. They have, uh, EMTs, um, they have paramedics that are working longer hours, overtime, be able to fill weekly shifts. Uh, we know that there's an issue there with some, some of our former, um, EMS members leaving for local communities that are paying more. Um, so that is being talked about heavily. Um, one suggestion I was going to bring up that I, I'd like to see some type of evaluations of our leadership there, uh, which is basically, um, the director, the assistant director and then, um, the secretary. And I was happy to see that they had actually sent out to all of, uh, the EMTs and paramedics an evaluation form to evaluate each one of those. Sadly, only ten out of thirty, uh, team members filled that out, which is a shame. So we are, actually me and another board member, Jeremy Card, are actually um, going to, we're going to do another run on these evaluations and me and Jeremy are going to be the ones to actually get the evaluations. There's no names on it, but there's handwriting. Some of the word was that they were concerned that their handwriting would be seen and people would know how they're evaluating, you know, the three, three people. So me and Jeremy will be receiving that. We will do all of the information together and then we will be able to, uh, have that for the board. I think that's very important. It needs to tell our leaders to run over there. Um, we have a hundred and twenty two thousand dollar grant that needs to be used by August. And that grant, it's going to be used for new monitors and ambulances. Uh, so we're working right now. They're doing, they've got a couple of monitors. They've been testing. We've got one more that they're going to test. And then we'll be making a decision on that. Our monitors are really old, so that's going to be a big, big increase. Uh, big update with them. Um, that's everything I have for.
As far as the transit, uh, committee, just I had a conversation with our county attorney. Um, basically related to these CDLs, DOT physicals. Um, I just wanted to make sure that the, that the conversation that we had at the previous meeting was correct and that all the communication had taken place. Um, I asked him about a policy slash procedure for new employees coming in for the transit, new drivers. Uh, if, if if we have a, a current policy and procedure in place, and it doesn't sound like we, we have an updated one, if we have one at all. Um, and it was brought to the attention, what about if we can, I asked the county attorney if there was a template that we could at least see. And he said, well, what about your road commission? What do they use? And I said, you know, hey, that's an idea. If we can get a copy, I mean, I, I know they're not the same. But if we can get a copy of the road commission's policy as far as what they do for new employees for um, their drivers, at least so we could see it. But we definitely need to move forward with a policy procedure for hiring new drivers.
That's very important. I know that was one of the items that we've had our meetings with Ray, who Brenda had had on the agenda as we're moving forward, but yes, that is very important.
Can you get your hands on that, Tim?
Okay.
Okay. And I would also say.
Yeah, you're right about that, if it exists.
I just had that EMS meeting yesterday, but in EMS, as long as transit, transit's going to move forward with trying to get a, a millage. EMS would like to get on a upcoming millage.
August.
August.
We haven't had any further discussion on it, so could you put a, at the committee of the whole? For ongoing discussion?
Yeah, this just came about last night, at last night's meeting.
Is it for an August election?
So the deadline on that was May, May second, so we better keep that on the put that on for, uh, two weeks for committee of the whole. Are you guys okay with that?
Yeah, that's fine.
Commissioner Scott?
Yeah, I attended road commission yesterday. It was a lot of lot of, uh, talk about how the winter's been going and things like that. They're in cross laws right now. Labor restrictions, a lot of talk about that, but attended the city of West Branch meetings, uh, they've, uh, they had, uh, had passed a resolution to establish an obsolete property of rehabilitation district, and this is, uh, the old abstract office. They heard a proposal on, uh, on how that would, could be rehabilitated. Um, the city manager was appointed to that joint, joint airport zoning board. Um, Ogumah Township went to that one. Uh, they raised their, voted to raise the sewer rates. Uh, some, and has been years since there's been any increase. The supervisor, uh, wanted to bring up the Rifle River assessment. And he's very disappointed with that. He makes a good point. The county, the county residents here get, uh, get taxed three times on that one. Because we, this body here pays an assessment, the county township pays an assessment and the individuals pay an assessment. So they're paying county and township taxes, which turn around and get paid toward toward that assessment, so. Yeah, uh, Foster Township, uh, the board passed some raises for not only board members, but, uh, some of the other people that work for the township. Uh, ARPA was, uh, a topic up there. They have about twenty four thousand dollars left in their funds. Um, they're inviting the Pat Ranky from the road commission to their next meeting. Uh, they have some road issues they want to talk about. We talked about po- poverty, property exemptions up there. Um, so, uh, that, it was a good meeting. They had a good meeting up there. Um, Airport, airport, tended airport meeting, yeah, with Brett and with Brett, yes, um, Brenda was out. Ailing, sorry to hear about that. Uh, gee, what, what's the thing? So I don't.
Your report.
I like Brett's report on that.
I've already given my report.
Oh, you already did. Oh, dude. I can't remember. It's topics we get biggest on.
We talked about the zoning.
The zoning board, yeah. That was a big time. But, uh, no, I But, uh, no, I wouldn't, it wasn't good meeting.
Commissioner Simmons?
That's all I got.
Well, um. I missed, uh, the airport board, but Greg was there, I missed the health department board. Commissioner Mayhew was there. Um, I'm glad it snowed on the twenty-third, because I'll say I missed that meeting now. But, uh, I did, um, burn my foot accidentally and it really caused me some problems, so that's why I missed those meetings. Uh, one thing I want to bring, the wall of honor has been moved to April twenty-seventh. Uh, at the five-thirty meeting, right? Okay, I just want everybody to know that. So I'm going to call the people and let them know. I just want to double check that.
I think the families have already been notified. That was the whole purpose of moving it, so they had adequate time to prepare for this.
Right. I notified my two people, but I haven't notified them yet, I mean, we got until April twenty-seventh.
Okay, I believe the prosecuting attorney is taking care of this, correct?
Okay.
Okay, alright. Well, good, uh.
Any other report?
No, except that I'll be attending meetings now.
Mr. Mayhew?
Uh, I've been, uh, attended a few. West Branch Township, uh, Siren, back to the planning board, I believe. Uh, they're talking to the county on redoing some roads. And it's lawn mowing season, they took a bid on that.
Hopefully soon.
Uh. The health department had a generator go down in Towas. That was their big deal and they lost some vaccines. But only four thousand dollars worth out of like twenty-four thousand, so they didn't lose a lot, but they lost some. Uh. I talked to the other commissioners on that board. And I asked them if they had any trouble trying to get help for the elderly over in their areas on the marijuana deal and they all did. And they all have no help either. But they do know the problems there, but they cannot get any help either. Uh, Rose City, they, uh, not Rose Township. They're bitted their lawnmower and they got a blade officer. Black in Township. Uh, got a new furnace and got red tagged and closed. So that was quite a meeting. Good hour. Has found out they're not zoned and you can have as many dead patters as you want. Yeah, good hour Township. And they, uh, hired a full-time fire chief while I was there. And I went to the committee on aging and they're still not having any luck getting any information on marijuana. It's one of their big things. They're, they're on that steady. And that's pretty much all of my went to.
Who's the blade officer that got hired?
I do not know.
No?
Nope. I just know we got one.
You and I had a conversation, um, about, uh, uh, individuals wanting resources on information related to, to marijuana.
Yeah.
And we just had a, a brief conversation about at, at the, uh, council on aging, having some type of, uh, seminar for these individuals. Whether the sheriff, the prosecuting attorney or some, uh, healthcare provider could, could, could provide.
Somebody.
Information.
They're, they're, they're really trying, I mean, these people got questions.
So wh- what are these questions on marijuana?
Huh?
What are these questions that these elderly have on marijuana?
How strong is it? I guess it says on the bag how much was used, but not how strong it is.
What sparks this conversations are these questions at, at your committees, like what? Why are these questions being brought up?
These are older people on fixed budgets and they're looking to cheapen their money for prescription.
Okay, they're looking into using marijuana as a medical.
Yes, uh. Now, older people, we have, they have cancer. Uh, arthritis. And I mean, it's, it's, it's not a joke, they are trying it, they are, they are doing this.
They have questions on it and they don't know.
You bet.
They don't know who to seek, so you directed them, just because I, I'm going by yours and mine's conversation, you directed them to the health department.
Absolutely.
You're asking us what resources, uh, to give to these individuals that are asking these questions, correct? Because people don't know.
They don't.
Correct. Um.
They ask the person sitting beside them and that's where they're getting their information.
Correct.
And I'm sure the sheriff is aware of it, they're trying to get a deputy to go talk to them. I mean, they're not trying to hide, they, they, they want, they want answers.
So it'd be nice at, like the commission on aging, I've been there for their lunch and their afternoon activities, if they could have some type of educational seminar that is advertised um, for one or numerous individuals to come in to do the education.
Right, I talked to the lady at the health department and their problem is it's state legal. But it's not federally legal and they don't want to say nothing. But, like you said, I mean, it, 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 it's serious and I know there was ten other, Brenda can lurch for that, there's like ten other eight commissioners on the health department board. And everybody's got the same problem.
So your question is where do I direct these, these individuals?
Exactly.
Where do I send them, who do I tell them to call, where, how, how?
Exactly.
That's a valid question.
They need help. If there's somebody that can help them. Godspeed.
That's a valid question, Commissioner Simmons?
Yes, I've talked to the health department and, uh, for medical, for medical things. You know, they need to go to the doctor because DHD two can't give them medical stuff because they're, they're not doctors. And this stuff's going to affect everybody differently. So it's like, I, I would just tell them, talk to your doctor, if you want to know how it's going to affect you. Because, uh, you can't, sheriff's department can't tell them how it's going to affect them.
They can't, they can't drive with any of it.
What the rules and what the law, they're asking, what are the rules, what are the laws, they're, they're asking.
But my understanding was they're asking other things too.
Oh, they do.
Numerous other things.
Like medical things.
Mm-hmm.
And we can't answer those, they have.
That's what I explained to him, is they need to have a conversation with their medical provider.
Yep.
Is that it?
Yep.
Um, yes, sir.
This line item always kind of gets me, it says committee reports, I think you should say committee and township, I failed to just talk about my township.
Oh, go ahead, sir.
Yeah. Um, so Mills Township, uh, we've got a couple parks that, uh, bids are going out to build. And then also roads are always brought up, our road situation in Mills Township is, is really bad. Um. And that's something that I'm going to be helping work on then with, with the road commission and, and formulating a, a game plan. Uh, we have a plan that's years and years in the making, but it's got to start somewhere. And it needs to start now, so. So that's a big item, uh, they're also looking to build a new township hall. Um, those, those are the big things really right now.
I think on his point, I think it should be changed to commissioner reports.
That's fair, anything.
You know, well, the administrator's report is already here, we don't hear any other committees other than the reports, other than from the commissioner, so just commissioner reports.
I agree with that.
Clear that. I just kind of get narrow minded when I see committee and I'm rattle on all my committee stuff and then I'm like, oh, I forgot my township, you know?
I'll circle right on back to you, Commissioner Wiltsey. I like that commissioner report idea though, that way anything can be brought up. Um, Michigan work, for me, Michigan Works, uh, attended that meeting, we had the audit, there was absolutely zero findings, uh, they have an amazing, uh, team over there. They are getting some opiate, uh, settlement funds, they have to utilize their, theirs more towards coaching. Uh, they're going to have more coaches, uh, to assist with these, um, addictions and educations moving forward. So that may be another resource is Michigan Works and I will, I will move forward and ask those questions as well. They did recently hold a grant writing class, I believe that was about two weeks ago. Um.
Last week during the snowstorm.
I know it was during a snowstorm, they had pretty good attendance, I think they had twenty, uh, I want to say twenty-six participants, but I could be off on that and I know the, the secretary had, you attended, correct, Kelly?
I don't know, it was me, Tina, and Missy.
Bad roads, they didn't go.
I even emailed the lady twice.
Oh, no. There's going to be, but not till next year. So nobody attended?
Not from here, bad roads.
Oh, gee, I didn't realize that, um, because they were pretty pleased with the turnout, there was people from all over, uh, numerous different counties that were there, um. Uh, and that was free of charge, they, they did, uh, have a little luncheon deal, um, hopefully there were, because that's been talked about for about a year, um. Having one of, uh, a gra- free grant writing, so Michigan Works did flip the bill for that and they plan on, uh, doing it a while, again, but it won't be for probably close to a year. Uh, the zoning meeting was canceled, so we didn't have one of those, I did not attend, um, Logan Township last night. Um, how many townships and everything else pretty much is this upcoming week, so unfortunately I did not make Logan Township. And neither did our Herald writer, I already asked. So, uh, I'll have more to report at the next meeting. That's all I have. Uh, item fifteen, general public comment, sir, come on up.
Uh, I'm Bob Fellerito, I am the district director for Senator Michelle Hoydinga. I just wanted to get around, introduce myself, uh, thirty-sixth district, uh, is made up of sixteen counties. From ma- eastern part of MAST on up to Prescott Island, down to the northern part of Bay, so it's, it's a pretty big area that I have to cover. Not many senators have in district people, uh, dedicated to being in district, but Senator Hoydinga has me in district. And a little of my background is I am a former municipal county commissioner, was very involved in MAC. So I get what you go through as county governments, as, as local governments, so, um, please reach out to me, I'll leave you my card. Um, contact me with any questions you may have for me or for the senator, issues that you're seeing with your constituents. Uh, more than happy to help, uh, attend any meetings or anything like that, so. Um, one thing I wanted to mention, I know many road commissions in northern Michigan are experiencing some new issues with Eagle uh, on brine and salt, brine in the summer, the brine salt mix in the winter. Um, they're coming out with new rules, I know they're rolling out some Zoom meetings here to explain that. Um, and I think there's a lot of confusion and upset among our road commissions, I know road commissions have a County Roads Association meeting this month, a big conference in Lansing. Uh, encourage them to come down, uh, they can meet with the legislators, with senators and representatives and, uh, hash these things out, hopefully. This is coming from, uh, Eagle, not legislated, so it's another rule, uh, being promulgated from, from an agency, so. Um, there's something else to look out for, so it'll be a big issue, especially up here in northern Michigan where we have lots of lakes, rivers, streams, ditches that could carry brine and, and want to be shut down, so. Um, if you have any questions, I'd be more happy to answer, uh, other than that, uh, yes, ma'am.
Did you, you didn't talk about what we talked about, right?
Oh, the, the, that, well, yeah, the, the state tax, uh.
Income tax.
Yeah, the income tax, uh, issue was settled, uh, well, it, it's going to the governor. It comes without the hundred and eighty dollars because it was not voted to have immediate effect. So the hundred and eighty dollars was eight hundred million dollars that was going to be transferred to bypass the state mandated, uh, income tax rollback. So without the hundred and eighty dollars, that means income taxes will be rolled back from, uh, about a quarter of a percent, so. I, I think more people will gain by an income tax rollback than getting a hundred and eighty dollars, that's going to be taxed anyways. So you end up about with a bag of groceries in the, in the end of that hundred and eighty dollars, so.
I'm sorry, do you have a business card?
Yep, I will pass these out to you, so you have that, it has my personal, uh, contact, so you can call me anytime, if any issues.
Wonderful, can, can we each have one?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep.
I just wanted to say I really appreciate taking the time to be here.
Oh, you're welcome, you're welcome. And I apologize, it's now March, I tried to come back last week, but, yeah, everybody had that.
Thank you, sir.
That's snowstorm, so.
So are you in Lansing some days?
I am only in Lansing about, uh, uh, once a month, I, I, I am dedicated to being in district. Uh, so I'm here to serve you, local governments and constituents, so more than happy to attend anything you need me to.
Where's your office primarily located?
Uh, I work out of home, I, I live in Waters, uh, Gaylord area, yeah.
Thank you, thank you for your time, sir.
Well, thank you.
Any other, uh, general public comment? Yes, sir.
Can I ask Tim a question?
Yes, sir.
Tim, was we not supposed to move that to the front door? The metal detector.
And again?
The metal detector, we, we're not supposed to move it to the front door.
That new thing where we have to walk through.
We haven't, no, we haven't decided to move any of the entrances.
Well, with the sheriff and all of us decided that that's where it was going to go, I thought.
Uh, that would have to be a decision this board would make, and no, I don't recall any decision.
Are you talking about the security?
Yes.
It, I mean, it was just brought up, nothing was decided. Right. So do you want that on the committee of the whole to talk about in two weeks? Okay.
Or hold to that ARPA meeting because that's one of the projects that's on that list.
Okay.
You know, talk about if we want to do that.
Okay, Commissioner Simmons?
I have, I have a couple of questions, uh, Tim. Um, was there any other, because I haven't been to a couple of meetings, as you know, was there any update on the, um, uh, insurance thing that we discussed before?
Interesting, yes, thank you for bringing it up, that, uh, question resulted from the voluntary benefits insurance, um, that we were looking into. I had the meeting with the, uh, employee group, uh, department heads and the union reps. And, um, since that time, well, first the suggestion came up was that our Mesa, our health insurance carrier uh, has some voluntary benefits too, but none of us knew exactly what they were, so we said, well, let's, let's have them in, so we've, I've actually got an email to reply to uh, and some dates to bring them in to talk to department heads on what they do. And since that time, also had a cold, cold call from another carrier. Um, it's, um, pretty well established in Michigan called Brown and Brown on a Saginaw. Uh, and they're also looking at that too, so, um, again, my goal by the end of this month is to have some kind of a recommendation for the board to consider, but we're going to have a couple of other reps come in and talk to us and, um, see who's got the better product and, and bring it to you for consideration.
So there'll be more to come on that?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it's been actually a lot of activity on that front.
Have a more thing, um. Is there any, have you talked to the emergency manager about, uh, generator for the commission on aging?
He was at the last meeting here and, uh, he was looking at some federal money for that and came up empty that they weren't able to find anything for them.
So would that, would that be a, like an ARPA?
For discussion, it could be, the emergency manager was at the meeting and that was asked, that's not listed as a disaster shelter. Surprisingly, he did go over the, the areas, uh, uh, facilities in the county that are, and that was not listed.
You know, what, which ones are?
You'll have to ask him, I don't want to, I don't want to, there's one basically in each area.
Okay.
Yeah.
I asked them and they thought they were.
They're not.
I know, I'm, I'm telling you, they think they are.
Well, they need to collaborate.
Okay.
Yes. Any, any public comment in the room? Any public comment on the phone? Next week meeting is at nine AM?
Yes.
Correct? Tom, nine AM next week, okay? Can I have a motion to adjourn?
I make that motion.
I'll support it, with motion or support to adjourn, all in favor, say yes.
Yes.
Motion carries.
I don't know.